I'd like to say good evening and welcome to the Village of Ortonville, our rescheduled regular council meeting. It's January 4th, 2021, and the meeting is being held via Zoom as permitted by PA 228 of 2020. It is 7:00 PM and we will get started. First thing we would like to do is the Pledge of Allegiance, and can we please have Larry Hayden start that for us this evening?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, we would like to prepare for a moment of silence. We'd like to honor Ronald Sutton. This was his second opportunity to serve his community as a village council trustee. He was a board member from 1983 to 1988. He served as trustee and president pro temp at that time. As a lifelong resident of the Village of Ortonville, Ron always made time to serve his community. He served on the Brandon Fire Department, the Brandon Township Trustee, Brandon Township Election Board, and was co-chairman of the Ortonville-Brandon United Fund Drive. He sat on the Ortonville Cemetery Board, serving as trustee and vice president. Ron was a member of the Ortonville United Methodist Church for over 60 years, having served the church in many capacities.
Okay.
He was a life member of the Masonic Lodge, Ortonville Eastern Square, past-worthy patron, and Shiners International. It's requested that council take consideration in the future of renaming the preservation park in honor of-
That went all the way back, started over again.
I can't get it to do anything. I can't even get it off my screen.
Uh-oh.
It's time to please pause for a moment of silence at this time.
So we have seven victims shot to death, five young men.
We thank you very much for Ron, for all your years of service and capacities in serving. Jenna, if you don't mind, we're ready for a roll call, please.
Rice?
Here.
George?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Nivell?
Here.
Randazzo?
Here.
Thank you.
Excuse me, one minute, I'm sorry. Jenna?
Yeah.
Kay is still waiting to be let in. Could you please let her in the meeting?
Um, are you, can you chat with her because I don't see anybody in the waiting room?
Well, she says she's still waiting and help.
Melanie, can you send her the link from the email? Maybe-
Yeah, the link from the email.
Melanie, you're able to use the chat at this time or talk privately. We'll have the approval of the agenda-
Thank you. All right, thank you.
There's Kay. Hi, Kay.
Hi, Larry. I'm sorry, I had technical difficulties on my end.
Okay.
Jenna, do we have an appro, I mean, I'm sorry, we're looking for an approval for the agenda, please.
Trustee Hayden, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
And who supports that, I'm sorry?
Me. Tony.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a reminder, Tony, make sure you state your name because in the Zoom meetings, they can't see us necessarily.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Randazzo. Do we have any further questions or comments on the agenda? All right, looks like we're ready for a roll call vote, please. Jenna?
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. Item number six is the approval of our current council minutes, which is the minutes of November 23rd, 2020, and we're looking for a motion on that.
Trustee Hayden, I will make a motion to approve the village council regular meeting minutes of November 23rd, 2020 as presented.
Trustee George, support.
All right, so we have motion on the table by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman George to accept the 2020 minutes. Do we have any questions or comments at this time? All right, hearing none, we are ready for a roll call vote, please, Jenna.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes. All right, thank you. Next up, we have our acceptance item, which is the Treasurer's Report from November 2020. Following that is our dispersments, which is ending December 20th, 2020, and we are looking for a motion on that at this time.
Are we going to motion before questions? I have a couple of questions.
Um, please.
Anybody going to motion?
Motion on the minutes?
No, on the dispersment.
Sorry, dispersments, I'm typing the word minutes at the same time.
All right, are we doing the motion on the Treasurer's Report or the dispersment?
No, the dispersment. The Treasurer was in acceptance.
I make a motion to accept the dispersments ending December 20th, 2020, in the amount of $20,897.06.
Thank you. We have support.
Trustee Hayden, support.
All right, thank you. Motion on the table by Councilman Nivell, supported by Councilman Hayden to accept the dispersments. Do we have any questions or comments at this time?
Um, council member Nivell, I have a couple of questions, please. And I'm sorry I didn't get these earlier. I just got home, it's been crazy. For number 19, the card member services, the amount of $488, it's an Oxford Bank Visa. What, what is that? Is that an annual? And what's that include? What's that for?
For various charges to the, the credit card, primarily it's charges that are made by the DPW department.
Okay, so you usually then just put it in one lump sum and do not detail what the charges are?
Those charges are detailed on the bill, but they're not detailed in this.
Right. Okay, um, I don't know, just a suggestion, maybe, maybe we should know what the charges are next time. If you could put what it's for, that would be helpful. My next question is number 23, the Miss Dig. It says annual membership fee. So does that 1594 cover any place in the village that we want Miss Dig to come out and survey or make sure there's no lines?
Well, it's not just what we want, other people can request Miss Dig services, and then we go out and locate what those services are. And I'm not sure whether this dollar amount is for an annual fee or for a series of different charges for that service.
It says annual membership fee, so I'm going to go with-
Well, some portion of it will be that. Maybe it's all, maybe it all is.
Okay, and I guess then to make that clear, I know as a personal resident, I can call Miss Dig anytime I want and they come out and will do that for me, will do that service free. So when you say this is not just for the village, it's for others, what, why would other people need that when you can do it on your own?
Because they, they, they get those services facilitated through our DPW.
So Dale, when you said not for the village, you meant not for the village office per se, you didn't mean village residents, right?
It's not, it's not a request because our DPW is outdoing something, it's because we've been, been requested through, through them to, to isolate where, where utilities are.
Okay, so, and first, can you put your camera down so we see more than your eyes and head? Thank you, hello. So, I, so if the village calls Miss Dig to come out to say, like, to put a sign out, like by the, by the A and W, that's a perfect example, Miss Dig come out, detect the lines, okay, that's part of this, and I understand that, but why would personal residents need this service when we can all do it on our own?
I don't know whether you can do it on your own. I know that if contractors are asking to put in utility lines or do other things on a site, they have to call Miss Dig-
Right, and that's for village-
They have to get that, that service.
Right, that's for village purposes, I get that.
The details of what is included in that charge are, yes, I don't have that information for you, I can get it.
No, I just want to make sure that's for as many times as we want to call them out for village needs.
I can't tell you that for sure.
Excuse me, Melanie, is this something that we could have Dale follow up on and get the information back to us? It doesn't seem like we really need to have this explanation-
Yeah, Larry, I know, and as soon as I'm, he's clear on the direction. So we just need to know for the 1594 what that entails. And that's it, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on the dispersments from the November 30th to December 20th?
Just a quick question, what Melanie, I'm sorry, what Melanie is talking about, with number 19 and number 22, so we're going to get a detailed breakdown of everything on that?
If you want it, sure.
Okay.
Well, 22 is, is two months' charge, there's less than four-
I'm sorry, 23, 23.
So I think what we'd like to see is instead of the Oxford Bank Visa, under the explanation, it would simply state which kind of department or area. So it would be DPW or Office Supplies or something along that line, and then that would be the clarification that we need. We don't necessarily approve each charge, we approve that the charges have been approved by the manager. So if it states what areas, I think that would be appropriate for council, correct? Anybody?
Just for clarification, I think card member services, Dale, you mentioned that we get a statement from the Visa, and this is just the amount of the Visa statement, and the Visa statement has the itemized list in the statement. Perhaps it would be easy just to attach a copy of that statement to the dispersment report so we can see the breakdown.
Good.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on that? All right, hearing none, I think we're ready for a roll call vote, please, Jenna.
Nivell?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes. Thank you very much, 5-0, motion carries.
Okay, I gotta shut this down.
Next up, we have public comments, and in our public comments, you're more than welcome to step forward if it's something that is on the agenda at this time. We also have a moment later for non-adjourned agendas, non-agenda items, let's try that the other way. Three minutes, please, per person, you're more than welcome to kind of turn your mic on, raise your hand, do whatever you can, we're very flexible here with this being online versus in person. You can also put your information into the chat, your question or your comment, and we're more than welcome to read that out for you. So either way, whatever you'd like to state, please step up and take your turn and share something with us or ask a question, we'd love to hear from you. Anybody from the audience at all? All right, it looks like we have none at this time. Next up is our consent agenda, showing nothing for the January 4th meeting. That will be followed by our trustee committee updates, and we are going to start down on Tony's end and work backwards alphabetically. So Tony, if you please don't mind starting, is there anything you'd like to, okay, wait a minute, if you don't mind, somebody did ask a question, I had to wait a couple of minutes because I know it takes time to type. The question is, not necessarily being familiar with the November meeting that they had missed, will Crosman Park be discussed at the December meeting? And unless there is any specific updates from the village manager at his point in time, there is nothing specific on the agenda. Dale, will you be addressing anything with that at the manager's update?
There's nothing new to, to address at this time.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the question. All right, let's circle back around to trustee comments with Tony Randazzo first, please. Trustee update.
Um, I'm still trying to find that email I sent out.
You're okay? And so you will be updating us on the IT committee. I know you had a chance to meet, and you're going to pull up those minutes for us, that would be wonderful if there was anything to touch on.
Yeah, um, here it is. They opened up.
Can you do it without the minutes?
No, I just want to make sure I followed everything. Yeah, December 18th, the IT Committee, which is composed of the village manager, the clerk, the treasurer, myself, we met for about an hour and a half, and I just want to say I appreciate that. And we talked over a few things. One, one of the big things is getting information updated in a timely manner and getting the videos for these meetings in a, in general, one place with, within a quick, quick turnaround. And I'm talking within no more than five hours of a, end of a meeting. We also talked about who is able to update the website, which, I don't know if I should bring this part up right now, Tanya?
Um, I guess basically what there is, is just a, everybody's had a chance to review the, the committee notes, and was there anything, anybody have any questions for you? That's kind of the gist of it at this point. You know, definitely people would contact you if there's questions, or if there's something you and Dale wanted to discuss, you know, you can always throw that on there.
Okay, can, can we provide feedback on the minutes Tony distributed to us?
Yeah, I'm, okay, is that what you're saying, Tanya?
Whatever you, like I said, it's-
Well, I would like to give some feedback now, if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine.
I saw that you had three suggestions about creating some processes about the website updating and about documents on demand updating, and then you had a third one about authorization given to a board member. The only thing I would be concerned about that is that there are statutory obligations for the clerk to make these updates, and of course, the village manager also has to be able to manage things. But I think it's not necessarily a good idea to add a trustee also to the mixer, I think we should keep it to the statutory required people to have access and limit access to any others, just to avoid the sorts of issues that created an IT investigation, which I think was a waste of taxpayer money last year, but we still went through an exercise of an IT investigation last year because of concerns about who had access to what on documents, demands, and the website and stuff. So I'd rather keep it to just people who really need to have it under the law.
Well, with, with that, when, when you, it's going to get technical here, but a person having a, a specific login, if I was sitting there or sitting at home here and I wanted to update the, these, the video, as soon as this, this meeting was over, I could update it to the website. I think that's what a lot of constituents, constituents want to see. With a separate log on, everything is tracked with that log. I also advise you, as far as the documents on demand, I, I don't think I mentioned anything in there that, that I can see. That was just for the clerk and the manager. This is strictly dealing with the website and, and updating it, so this has nothing to do with documents on demand.
Okay, but I still, I still feel that even the website is the official face of the Village of Ortonville, and that really is the clerk's and manager's responsibility to maintain that site. So I still, you know, and you don't have to worry about being technical with me, Tony, I am an IT person myself, so I understand all these things, and I understand about-
And some of us understand it too, even though we're not in that-
Yeah, and, you know, and if this was not, you know, related to the government stuff and the statutory stuff and the legal stuff that we have to comply with under the state law, I would be probably on board with what you're seeing, but I just think it's, being government, it's, it's a little different from your typical business-type scenario, so I think it's probably better just to leave it in the hands of the, you know, people who are responsible for it under the Michigan statutes, that's, that's just my feeling.
And what I was suggesting, if you give that feedback to Tony back, and you go ahead and give him the feedback-
Yep.
And any additional, you know, information can be given back, they can take that back to IT, and they can, you know, go ahead and discuss it and see. So they got a chance to discuss it, bring the information to us, we can give feedback back to them, and then they can send it back, so that would be wonderful to do. If you don't mind, Larry, I know you have a couple of items that you'd love to share, that would be great. Anybody else, I mean, anybody else, as I say, have a question or any type of detail that they needed from Tony at this time? And then Tony, did you have any other details you wanted to touch on there?
Um, yeah, like I said, my, my main concern is that there's, there's two village employees that can update it, and then an outside entity, which is the hosting company. I, I don't like that idea. So I would feel more secure having somebody that has been doing websites for, as stated, 23 years plus. That again, this is strictly just for the website, but I am more than happy to answer questions, take it back to the IT committee, and have something available by the next, our next meeting later this month.
So, this is trustee Nivell, so Tony, has it been determined that you are IT, assigned to IT then?
At, at this point, as of right now, until we get further down, yeah.
Until further down the agenda, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, Tony, I would just like to add that, first of all, I really appreciate the thorough of minutes that you provided for us from the meeting, that's, that's really helpful for us, so thank you for that. And I also would want to say that there's no way I want to, you know, I definitely appreciate your experience and knowledge about IT website maintenance, I know you've done that for Surt as well, and I would certainly encourage you to work with the manager and trust and clerk to mentor them as needed to help them become more proficient, because I know your knowledge is very valuable there. It's only the direct access that I have a little bit of a concern with, having too many people with, with access to make modifications on theirs, but I have no problem if you want to, you know, assist them and mentor them while they do it and help show them things, that would be great.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Anything else? I'll set, Tony, are you still working on it? You tell me, I don't want to cut you off.
Oh, no, I'm good, I'll, I will continue with the other three, if, if I'm still on that committee. We'll set up a meeting.
Appreciate it, thank you. Melanie Nivell is up next, please.
Okay, well, further down on the agenda, we have the wayfinding, as far as the temporary signage, so I will discuss that then. Also, I had given my notes, I sent them into Dale and Jenna, were those sent out, the wayfinding notes to council?
Not yet.
Okay. So, and then the planning commission will get more in depth a little bit further down when we review the preservation park ordinance, but the one thing I do want to bring up, the forgotten law, you guys got this, this bad boy. This came up in the planning commission meeting, did all of you read this and understand this article? And if you didn't read it, let me know.
Could you clarify that for me, please?
Okay, what this says, and I don't want to read the whole thing, but the Michigan Planning Enabling Act has made it a requirement for the planning commission review of a government's proposed construction or purchase of a street, square, park, playground, public way, ground, other open space, new building additions, or other structures. Following the adoption, or following adoption of the master plan of the Michigan Enabling Act, it requires the planning commission to review the location, character, and extent of the street, public way, open space, structure, or utility that's being constructed or authorized for construction, which means planning committee needs to be part of the streets committee, and we talked about how we could do this when Tanya appoints her street committee person later this evening. We would like to suggest that a member of the planning commission is also put on that, and I don't, I don't want to call it a, well, put on the committee, so that a member is always there, the planning commission. These items that are on the CIP with the streets and the sidewalks and such, they need to be approved or gone through planning commission, and also we have to check to make sure that they are in, in guidelines with our master plan. We also were talking about that DPW supervisor, who Bob, should also be part of that little tag team of the appointee from council, the appointee from planning commission, and Huxwell should be there as well, since he, you know, he does a lot of the work himself. But we really need to have a planning commission representative there, and that is by law, and, and we have been very lax in doing that, and I've been trying to push for planning commission to have more responsibility and be used to the full potential, and we have not been, and it needs to be, and by law, it has to be. So I just wanted to make sure that I brought that up tonight, that that is what we recommend as the planning commission, is to appoint someone from PC to be with council and DPW.
The law that you're quoting requires that the planning commission have input to those subjects, and it does not require that the planning commission have oversight or approval.
Part of the approval is with planning commission.
That's not true.
Actually, the way the law is stated, Melanie, I believe it says, planning commission reviews and makes recommendations, but the council can override planning commission's recommendation.
Before construction or authorization for construction, and, and planning commission has been left out of that loop for quite some time.
I think the law also has in it, because I actually looked it up after we, after we discussed this at the last planning commission meeting, and it also says that the planning commission does not provide a review within a certain timeframe of initiation of a project that by default- that by default, it, it, uh, you know, they're, they have a, a window to review these topics before they just are considered. Yeah. So we haven't been reviewing.
Into the loop.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, yeah, but that's exactly the point is it's not that we are in violation of the law currently. It's just planning commission has not been doing any reviews of these. But the law says that we should be involved in the process. And I, I agree with that for major expenditures, I think it is appropriate to get planning, uh, commission input, uh, when we're looking at some of these major projects.
Right, okay, can I finish though? No, thank you. Um, and so the reason why they did do this for the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, it, um, it was to help with corruption. Um, that's why they put this through, um, so that, let's just say hypothetically of our village manager was handing off, um, you know, certain projects to friends. Um, this, having the planning commission come in and look at it, as well as the council to approve it, um, is just one step um, for, you know, dotting your i's, crossing your x's, all that good stuff. Um, but the capital improvements review, um, is also another review that planning commission should have um, to make sure that we're just on the up and up. It's checks and balances and, and I think it's very important and I think we need to start doing it. And then I did see that some governments or planning commissions have adopted a policy that details when they will or will not review a capital improvement. Um, for example, replacing a door in a building, we, we don't need to review something like that. That's, you know, that's trivial, but items that are over a certain amount, um, of dollars should be, um, going through planning commission. So I would, um, recommend also that we adopt a policy with a dollar amount. And that's it. I'll do the rest of my, um, my wayfinding and whatnot further down the line.
So my, um, thought on that is planning commission meets tomorrow evening. Um, if you will continue that discussion, if you don't mind, um, the natural fit for that would be the planning commission uh, representative of council would then be the person on streets and that would fill that, um, gap with two and one. And that would obviously, uh, lower that expense and that would lower the timeframe of, you know, who needs to be involved. So if you don't mind, can planning discuss that tomorrow?
Um, so whoever the rep is, because currently I am, but I, I couldn't do streets, wayfinding and that and other things, so, but.
Well, that's something that needs to be discussed by planning to, I mean, that would be the natural fit. If planning wants somebody on streets, then it would be the person that council has on planning would already be the representative. But like I said, you discuss that and see if that's what you feel is a good fit as planning, please. That's the only, um, thought I had on that.
That appointment to that committee needs to be made by the president, not by the planning commission.
Right, and the appointments aren't going to be made until the end of January. January is when we make our appointments, so, um, that'll give us a chance to get input back from planning. That's why I was asking that question, you know, as to when I make that appointment. It would be nice to kind of see what the, what vision planning sees for that as compared to what council sees for that.
Okay, so you're not making appointments this evening?
No, they're always made in January. This is actually our December meeting. I know it's confusing, but.
Yeah, the way the agenda is, okay.
Yeah, no.
Melanie, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, Melanie, can you clarify, what committee are you talking about appointing these people to? An existing committee that we have or creating some new committee?
Um, that's totally up to council. I, I think that they should work hand in hand with whoever, um, the street, whoever is appointed streets by Tanya should be working with someone in the planning commission and also DPW. That's what we discussed at our planning commission meeting, Larry.
And DPW is on streets as well as the manager, the president, and a council member.
Yeah, of course, there's other capital improvements that would also need to be reviewed by planning commission that don't necessarily fall under streets, like building repairs.
Right, and that's exactly what I just said, and anything over a policy could be made over a certain dollar amount.
If I, if I could just offer a suggestion to take to our planning commission meeting tomorrow night.
That's what I'm going, yeah, it's what Tanya just suggested, so we'll.
My, well, let me, let me finish, please. My suggestion would be that, uh, the same law, the same, uh, planning enabling act also tasks the planning commission with the responsibility of developing the capital improvement plan itself. And I think that is something that we maybe could consider at the planning commission meeting for starting uh, or putting together proposal for a committee for, to work a capital improvement plan committee that would be led by planning commission and include the village manager, DPW, uh, supervisor and a member of council. That would be a suggestion I would have is that we could have a capital improvement plan committee that would work with manager in developing that, uh, capital improvement plan. And that same committee could also then review and make decisions on which topics that come up would need to be reviewed by the planning commission, which ones can just be, um, you know, given a pass on it.
So those are great conversation starters for planning commission tomorrow evening. We appreciate, um, the effect to give input and the information, Melanie. And please pass that along, and I know you'll be there as well, Larry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Melanie, did you have anything else at all for either wayfinding or, or planning at this point?
No, down the agenda, I will.
Okay, perfect. So it looks like we are on to Larry. Is there any updates that you'd like to share with us, please?
Well, Melanie already informed about planning commission, which, uh, thank you for that, Melanie. It was a very good thorough report. Um, we have not met on personnel committee, but I feel that it probably would be a good idea for us to have a, a personnel committee meeting uh, this month if possible, because I think there's a number of topics that we probably need to pick back up and start, uh, moving forward on again. I know we had been looking at some policies that, and need to be updated. So I would like to ask Tanya that we try to set up a personnel meeting when we have the opportunity.
Thank you, sounds good. Is there anything else, Larry?
Uh, that's it. That's the only committees I'm on at the moment.
So that looks like we're on, Pat George, would you like to update us, please?
Yes, I spoke with, uh, Fred, uh, Waybrent today on parks and rec. Um, traditionally at this time of year, the, on, from a winter sports standpoint, they start, uh, they start to gain momentum. However, uh, on the indoor sports, as you can imagine with COVID, uh, they're waiting for approval on their basketball programs, volleyball programs and basic health and fitness skills classes on the indoors, uh, waiting for the Brandon School District on those buildings to open it up. Brad thinks the earliest it's going to be would be January 18th. So right now those are on hold. Um, from the outdoor sports standpoint, in particular the skiing, the skiing and snowboard clubs. Um, Mount Holly is open for skiing. Unfortunately, uh, Mount Holly clubhouse is not. So they have a problem there with the ski clubs with the kids. It would be nice if they could go inside at times to warm up, so that's basically on hold also. And, uh, from the Brandon Township Park side of it, um, on outdoor activities there, primarily the ski lift, uh, Fred thinks on that, that that could be open for business, uh, fairly soon. And, uh, and we're hoping for that and, and Tony might have an update on that also, but, um, that's pretty much it. And just real quick, you know, down the road with, with mother, son and father, daughter dances and things like that, again, being indoors. Um, that's either typically that's around Valentine's Day, again, who knows? And, uh, and that's pretty much it, so, uh, I have other, one, one other, uh, point to address, but I'll wait till, till, uh, further down in the agenda on that, and that's all I have. I'm done.
All right, thank you. And that would be up to me. Um, we have had some of the committees already updated. I will go ahead with the DDA, um, and mention they did what they could to make Christmas special. We had a wonderful tree, um, that started with, um, leaving an ornament, taking an ornament, and it blossomed into some beautiful presents under the tree from Melie Nivell. Unfortunately, they were empty, don't get excited. Um, and the tree was just filled with wonderful ornaments, so that was fun to see. A lot of people taking their pictures next to it. Um, if you get a chance, it's still up for another day or two until we get down there and clean it up. But, um, there's a nice sign from the DDA that says, like I said, take an ornament, share an ornament, leave an ornament, um, which we had wonderful response. So I love their ability to, um, step in, um, as well as really pushing, um, Christmas shopping downtown. It was wonderful to see a lot of people walking and a lot of, um, businesses state how busy they were. So I really appreciate all the work that the DPW does, or the DDA does in order to push, um, the activities downtown. We appreciate you. Sorry about that. DPW also amazing. We'll talk about them later. All right, so we move on to number 12, which is our new business. And first up, we have Chief Koopas, who is back with us, um, from the Brandon Fire Department.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello, hi Dave.
What you have in front of you is the, uh, request to purchase a new 2019 Ford F-50 four by four remount. Um, basically what this is, it's a ambulance box, um, that has been seven years old, used at another agency. They took off, cleaned it up, um, and put it on a brand new chassis. Uh, that chassis is a Ford, um, four wheel drive, um, heavy duty. It's got a liquid spring, um, which means that the, uh, the back of the ambulance will lower it down when we're unloading and loading a patient. Um, it also will give a much better ride. Um, this ambulance would have been up for, uh, replacement in two years anyways. Uh, with that, we would have had to make the order today for a brand new one. And that brand new one would have cost us significantly more money. Um, so what I'm asking for is to, uh, purchase this 2019 Ford F-50. We will do it with a, um, a lease program, sorry about that. It's a three-year program. It's in the rears. Uh, and what that means is that our first payment's not until January of 2022.
Oh.
After the three years, so I make a payment on 22, 23, 24, we own it. Um, each one of those years, it's 68,932 and 87 cents. And, um, it's in within our budget, uh, for each year. So we will not go over budget on those, on that item. Uh, this has been approved by, uh, the fire authority and moments ago was also approved by the, uh, Brandon Township Board, because that's where it was at. It's like Shelby, Shelby, you're doing a darn good job. Is there any questions?
Um, trustee Nivell, I just have a, a comment. Um, as far as you saving, um, by remounting and saving the department, the 160,000, um, bravo to you guys for doing that. Thank you. Um, I think this looks good. I wa, I was wondering what the, um, the arrears payment leasing was, um, but it's because it doesn't start till 2022. So that was my other question. You answered it for me. Um, and then the cost savings overall would be approximately 53,000 plus? Is that, okay. I think it's pretty cool.
It is, it's, uh, we, we have a great opportunity here.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions for Chief Koopas? All right, are we looking to entertain a motion at this time?
Trustee Hayden, I make a motion to approve the fire department purchase of a new 2019 Ford F-50 four by four chassis, uh, with an ambulance remount at a price of 196,228 dollars.
Support? I'm sorry, trustee Nivell, support.
Awesome. Um, I would just like to say I was able to attend that meeting and get a chance to view the truck. Um, that came in at the same time as the other truck that was purchased, um, so we kind of get a chance to look at that. And I think it's a great, um, opportunity for us. Obviously, the board was, um, in discussion about the timing of it. And you can't choose the timing, but you definitely can choose when a good opportunity comes and you take it when you should. So I'm very confident that they made the right decision and they, they definitely know what they're doing over there, so I definitely support that.
As, as usual, chief, very thorough documentation and preparation for this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Do we have any other questions or comments before we go to a vote? All right, John, I think we're ready, please.
And Basil?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries five zero. Congratulations on your new baby.
Thank you, appreciate it very much. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
All right, next up is B, which is our property exchange for the septic system. Um, you had a chance to review the memo that I included. You had a chance to review the letter that the business owners have included, um, Julie and Joe Tysick. We have Joe Tysick with us this evening. And on the backside, um, of their letter is also the map of the area in question. So we'll kind of get a chance to talk about that, um, ask some questions, get some more information and clarification. Um, so, Joe, did you want to lead or did you want us to start off with question? What would you like?
Um, probably just if you have questions, I don't know if it's a self-explanatory from the paperwork or not.
All right, so we'll start with that. Um, do we have anybody who has questions for, uh, Joe Tysick or even myself or Dale?
Trustee Nivell, um, I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. Basically, it's a swap for spaces. Um, there's five parking spaces and you're swapping them for four to five parallel parking spaces. Is that correct?
Yes and no. One of them is theirs, so it would be four of ours.
Okay.
One space is already theirs and that is marked in the red space. You'll see the very first space is theirs.
Okay.
And we're looking at four of our spaces and a little bit of the green space in front of it.
Okay.
So you see where the, the line is drawn. It will take, the septic will fill half of a parking space and then the green space. So that leaves half of a parking space to turn them the opposite direction and create. So I think mathematically, um, as Bob from DPW and Joe walked it, we may lose one space. We may get four instead of five, depending on how it looks in the end result. So five are not guaranteed.
I would also indicate to council that we will need to involve our village attorney to get the proper paperwork together so that, uh, we memorialize this appropriately. If you, if you choose to do it.
And I believe, Joe, we talked briefly, um, about concerns if there were any, um, issues on whose property somebody's parked a car and gets danged or dented or broken into or anything like that. Um, and those were concerns, I think, from both ends, um, that Joe had talked about and, and Dale as well. So definitely things to look at.
And I would suggest that if, if council approve, uh, this allocation, that it be, uh, one of the conditions that the property owner pay whatever the attorney fees cost is.
For the review?
For the, for the development of the documents that are necessary to, to bring it to fruition.
Okay.
Uh, this is trustee Hayden. I have a question for, uh, Dale and Joe. Question for you guys, uh, I see in your letter that you had stated that you would be willing to purchase the lot. Um, was there any discussion, um, the purchase price to purchase that lot from the village so it becomes your lot?
Um, no, we haven't done that.
And I can say loosely, there was, um, I personally was in contact with a real estate agent who said, um, it, it would take quite a lot of work to come up with an estimate in general, um, to even do that for such a space that is not a space that has been done anywhere in the area, um, including local municipalities. You know, they've looked at something like that. Um, so at that time, we did not want to take that into effect when we didn't have to. Is that an option? Yes. Is that something to look into? But the, the cost for us to do that, to get a price, which is going to cost us four or $500, which the price may only be four or $500. Is that cost effective for the village?
Well, I mean, the only reason I'm asking is because my only concern is that by allowing this one particular business to just use village property, whatever the agreement is that we come up with, uh, when there's many other businesses that also may be in similar situations and have needs within the downtown area due to the lack of sewers, I just would feel more comfortable. I just would feel more comfortable probably if we just let them outright purchase it and then it's their property and we're not being seen as being showing any favoritism towards one business or another.
Right.
So I I think it'd be more above board and straightforward if we could just come up with a purchase. And if it's only worth five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, I wouldn't want to go through a big expense to determine that. We can probably come up with a fairly reasonable guesstimate of what we think it would be a reasonable value for that.
Absolutely.
Without going through a great expense.
And we also had the discussion of the, you know, changing of property. You know, the the school district gave the library the property for a dollar. You know, they gave us the property for the tennis courts for a dollar. Is that something we just like to do for legal reasons if that's a concern, you know, for us? The other thing that we discussed too is unfortunately for the property owner, as the improvements are in the value of the property will go up, their taxes will go up, we will get that money back. Plug your ears, Joe. But, you know, unfortunately, that is that is the reality is, you know, the village will, you know, get a kickback in that improvement as well.
I mean, technically, it's not going to be worth anymore. It's just a
No, I'm saying the property in general, not not just with the septic.
Right.
Right. With the improvements that you've made on that wonderful property. Unfortunately, taxes will go up and the village will
I mean, I don't want to ask. I wouldn't be looking to make a big dollar amount on that property, but I think we should have some kind of reasonable compensation. But I think it'd be cleaner if we just did a purchase of the property rather than try to work out any special agreements. And that might even save some of the attorney fees that you were talking about.
Right.
Anybody else? What's your feel? What's your thoughts?
I have a question for Joe. Joe, on this additional land that you're you're purchasing or going to use, is is the idea with this that you would would put some form of a septic field in that in that area? Is that basically what it comes down to?
Right. In order to expand 30 South, the old hardware, we're in there right now. We're at a maximum of how many people can be in that building at once, which is just our visual business. Without being able to expand the septic, the building will stay vacant. I don't know if you've been by there, but in the other two portions that we've kind of set up as two more buildings, if we can expand the septic, they won't allow us to put anybody in there. So it'd be it'd be vacant for who knows how long.
Yeah. Joe, do you have any any guesstimate on on what the the improvement to the septic field would would run you cost-wise?
Just to do, I already had them estimate just the portion I was going to redo. That's existing, which wouldn't give us any more usage unless we get the other private. It'll be thirty, forty thousand probably.
And that's in your current footprint, right?
I've already got four thousand in it with just doing the boundary lines and all the survey for the property and the engineering price so far without even touching it, so.
And that price estimate was in your current footprint without the additional space, correct?
Right, right. I mean, they can't really tell me until they, even if I get the property, they have to still engineer it to see how many more people they would allow us in that building, so.
Okay. Yep. Sewers would be nice, wouldn't they, Joe?
I vote for it.
Do we have any other questions or comments at this time?
Comment, the outside looks fabulous. I love it.
Thank you. We did want to improve that no matter what happened, just to make the downtown look better. Hopefully, we can fill it though.
I we all hope that we really do. I mean, the timing couldn't have been worse for you guys, really. But it it looks fantastic and thank you.
Thank you.
And Tony, anything you any thoughts, any questions?
Um, I I think I think trustee Hayden stated it would be just purchasing, having them purchase it out and let it be theirs. I think that's the easiest way and
Be interested in that also.
You know, I mean, they're already taking care of all the construction to replace it. So
Right.
That's what I'm for. And like President Price said, you know, the taxes and things like that. If it's going to improve downtown and make business, come for it, so.
Absolutely.
So what would we like to see as the next step as council? Obviously, discussion, you know, as as we work our way to a motion. What would how would we like to see that that look? Is that something we'd like the owner to do? Is that something we'd like to do? Would we like to offer a price? Would we like it to be appraised? What would we like?
Well, you had mentioned that the library and take me through that again.
The like the school district sold the library that space for a dollar. School district sold the tennis courts that was a dollar, correct, Wayne? Not. Is it? No, yeah, okay. So, you know, it's an exchange of entities. I don't want to speak on a turn that was, you know, before my time. I want to make sure I'm correct. But, um, you know, just an exchange of goodwill.
Right.
Something that we're looking at or are we looking at, you know, like I said, to ensure? When I did that route, it was four to five hundred dollars for us to get an assessment on that property, which she as deemed was guessing to be about that same price. So she said immediately, I don't know if that's something you want to do as a village. Again, that was just a conversation. It was nothing, you know, paid.
I I'm kind of agreeing with Hayden and Tony in regards to the selling, but and as far as the selling, I would like to see some type of in-kind service since they're putting all their money into it to improve it. And they're going to have these high taxes and not be able to put bodies in it, let alone without the health department approval and COVID. So I would like to see the village with a suggestion to present to them if possible, and and that's just my opinion.
Okay, can we come to a consensus that we can direct the village manager to continue to work with Joe on this topic and come up with a reasonable proposal for the purchase of that property from the village?
Yes.
And we can and we can review that hopefully by our January meeting later this month.
Absolutely. I think that's fair. That definitely gives them enough time.
It may not give us enough time to get an appraisal.
Well, I don't
I don't think we need an appraisal. I think we just need to decide on what's a reasonable amount to ask them.
That's how you decide a reasonable amount is to get the appraised value of it. I don't know how else we can do it. We can ask realtors. We can do a number of different things. I would suggest that you let me look at it and get bring something to you by the next meeting. For the discussion.
We're looking at making a profit of selling this. I'd like to see an in-kind service done such as
Yeah, I'm just look, I was only thinking if the property, if they're saying the property may only be worth four or five hundred dollars, I don't want to spend money to get it appraised for a small amount, especially when the the whole intent is to try to do something to help out with the downtown businesses.
And we will have to pay the attorney to draw that the
And I don't want to go through that. I mean, if the schools sold the library for a dollar, I'm sure you can come up with some suggestion, Dale.
Well, that's a slightly different situation when the school system, one political body is is providing to another political body a piece of land. This is an instance where the public body on behalf of its citizens is making a deal with one of the private citizens. So I think we have to be a little more careful.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. We want to make sure that it's a fair, reasonable
Right.
deal for both sides, I think.
And I like it too when we've run drainage or other things underneath people's, you know, property as well. You know, we have done that again in kind. We've asked, they've allowed it, you know, it's a little give and take. I see the concern with the legalities of it, absolutely. So yes, to to sell it loosely for the dollar, pay the price for our attorney to draw that up, we're still spending money. And we're still, you know,
I think it probably would be more than a dollar, but I can't see that it would be too much.
Right. I was just throwing it out there. Right.
And we're just hypothetically, I just don't want to spend, throw money at it to come up with, you know, two hundred dollars. I don't want to throw attorney fees at this. I just don't want to spend or waste taxpayer money like that.
Well, we're going to have to have the attorney fees in order to sell it. I mean, you know, in order to draw up those papers, we are going to have to pay attorney fees. So with that
Or I thought you suggested that maybe that was something that they pay for, whatever Dale can come up with.
That's an option, yes.
Yeah, but I feel Dale is going to be able to work up a proposal and have it ready for our next meeting for us to review and consider. And hopefully he can maybe reach out to some of the local real estate agents and see if they can just give a
Guesstimate?
Guesstimate, yeah, a reasonable guesstimate that we can work with without having to to pay a bunch of fees to get a formal appraisal on it or something.
Great. That sounds good. Joe and Joe.
Trustee Randy, asshole.
Okay.
Um, Joe, I don't know if you can answer this question, but I'm going to pose it. If if you were to get the okay to do this, how long would it take to? How long would it take to have that finished? Did they give you like a timeline?
It wouldn't be very long. It's just a matter of me putting up the money. Basically, it has to be engineered, which that's, you know, he's pretty much already had it engineered for my space. But if he has a field area, then he can expand it so we can put more people in there. So it really wouldn't be. You know, once I get all the okays and you get, you got to go through the county too to make sure even with the new engineered field that it's going to give me what I need to put more people in there to expand the the spaces, depending on what type of businesses are able to come in there. So actually doing the septic is pretty quick. You know, they just dig up what's there, replace it. You know, so I don't know an exact timeframe, but it's not, it's not a big ordeal.
Yeah, but I mean, it would it is a month. Is that a viable number, a month?
Start it and finish?
Yeah.
I would imagine, yeah.
It's at least because the county comes out in permits and then the county comes back out and inspects and that has to be, I thought it was thirty to forty-five days apart.
Okay.
So I
I don't want to have something sitting dug up for, you know, six months.
No, it wouldn't be like that at all.
Okay.
They just need a field similar over on off of Church Street at that little house there.
At school house.
Type of a setup, basically.
Okay. Thank you.
So Joe, is that something you're flexible within the next couple of weeks to to go over with with Dale at timeframe wise? I don't know business wise.
Pretty much anytime.
Wonderful. All right, so we look forward to hearing more at our next meeting on the twenty-fourth. I can't remember the date.
This is trustee George. I would hope that on the next meeting that we would be able to to come to an agreement on a on a on a purchase. I'm going to use the term purchase price for Joe, so we're not just kicking the can another month or something. And in in light of what the Tysics are doing for downtown in helping us out, I would hope that that whatever price is mentioned is is as low as possible to him. That's my that's my feeling on it.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Any other questions or comments from council members before we let Julie and Joe go? All right. Thank you very much for joining us. We appreciate it and we look forward to seeing you next time.
Thank you for your job.
Did you have any questions for us, Joe, at all? I forgot, I didn't ask you.
No, I think I'm good. Just wait for your decisions and then hopefully we can go from there.
And hope for a mild winter, right?
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is C, which is our wayfinding committee appointment and brand survey summary. The wayfinding committee appointment, we discussed at the last meeting, and I'm just clarifying that that we decided, correct me if I'm wrong, that that will continue to be Melanie. Melanie said she would like to. Is that correct?
Um, yes, please.
Okay, I just wanted to verify. I have not heard anybody else request step forward. Now's your chance if you would like to as or instead of as well. I know Melanie said she is interested in continuing if there are no other questions.
Okay, but this is not a council committee. It's a subcommittee, so it's not a standing council committee.
Right.
And I do not nor will I ever take money for this. All the time I spend on it is strictly volunteer hours. But
All right. Was there anybody else who's interested or are we all happy with Melanie continuing to have that?
I'm very happy with Melanie continuing. She's doing a good job.
Awesome. Agreed. All right. So now Melanie, can you tell us about the brand survey summary?
Thank you. And I do I feel like we are finally we're picking up the pace and we're finally getting someplace, so I'm very happy with that. So did all of you get, you all of you got the survey?
Yes.
Right, right. Okay. Did I, did you, because I want to go over that particular thing. Did you have any specific questions regarding the survey itself? I did want to make a couple of comments and and thank you, Jenna. Jenna took all the surveys and put them in this attachment, which I think is an Excel file, but it's wonderful. Thank you. I just wanted to point out that I think we learn more from our negatives than our positives at times. So if you have a chance, go through the negative, what people, how they negatively perceive Ortonville and just kind of, you know, go through that. And I think we can learn a lot by that. I do want to mention the pluses that came up very often in the survey where our fire and police, our pub, Papabellas, A and W, library, DPW, and DDA, those things were mentioned many, many times. So that's very cool. And I just wanted to make sure I stated that on record. Some of the negatives that were stated over and over were that we need sewers. Businesses need signage. Using the downtown as a traffic shortcut and no formulated trail plans. And some of the blight, those things were mentioned again more than once. And the things that were used most often were sidewalks, libraries, and going to all the little shops and our events. People love the events that are put on by the DDA. I mean, they do a great job. So I just want to say thank you and mention some of those. But this is the guideline we I told you that we sent out, and I hope you did the survey. We'd sent out the survey. We received this information back. Digital Alliance did this survey. And from that, they came up with some logos and some taglines for us. And since you didn't get the notes, I just have to read through the notes. We reviewed and discussed the logo and taglines, and the committee chose three logos and two taglines out of five options. Additionally, the current Ortonville Village logo and tagline will remain as one of the options. Digital Alliance is going to revise and send updated options the week of January fourth. So sometime this week. Once the options are finalized, the wayfinding committee will present to village council. So that's where we are with that. Then we discuss the temporary directional signage. But do you want me to wait and talk about that when we get to that part and the agenda?
Sure, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
We'll give us something else to talk about.
Yeah, but did anyone have any questions on the actual survey or some of the comments or are all of you pretty good?
Actually
Trustee George, go ahead, Larry.
No, go ahead, Pat. You start.
Trustee George, yeah, I found it very inform and very informative, Melanie, and I did go right away to the negatives to see what people were saying. And, you know, I did, my ears always perk up on trails and sewers and things like that, especially for downtown, so.
And mentioned many times.
It was real good.
Yeah, the trails were mentioned many times, so that
And the source, yeah.
Yep.
Downtown, yeah.
Yep. Larry, you had something?
Uh, yeah, I I did notice that some of the both positives and the negatives seem to vary depending on whether the person was a village resident or township resident or in Groveland and such. I would like to ask if the wayfinding Um, I would like to ask if the wayfinding committee could kind of do a little bit of an analysis to see what sort of different trends they see between people who are village residents versus township or other outlying communities. Because that might, that might be kind of interesting too, because I think it does. I I definitely did see kind of a different perspective coming from village residents than what I see from the township people, which might be because they actually live in the town and might be a little more in touch with the day-to-day activities as opposed to somebody who's uh, maybe visiting the downtown less frequently. So it would be an interesting analysis to look into that.
And and then if we did that, um, what is that for?
Uh, that's because just like what we we did when we were playing, putting together the master plan, we wanted to get the surrounding community input, but we also wanted to isolate just the village input. Because the master plan, for example, is supposed to be for the village, but we want to consider outside side communities, but the village resident view should take a little more priority over those who are outside of the community, and I think the same thing should be true here. So that's why I would just like to see an analysis to see if there is a differing uh, perspectives between the village residents versus the people who are outside of the village.
Okay, um, I can mention that, and it does indicate if they were village or.
Yes, it does.
Yeah. So but.
And that's where where it makes it easy to do that type of analysis. So I think it'd be worthwhile to look into that and see if you do see any differences in those.
Well, okay.
And then you need something Jenna can easily do um, with the Excel spreadsheet. All you have to do is is simply turn it into um, the data.
Filter the column, yep.
Just right over and so easy to turn it into a pie chart or a, or a line chart.
Yes, which um, was also, you know, part of this too. So um, and you yeah.
Can I just ask, isn't the purpose of the wayfinding committee to bring people into town from the outside of town, so wouldn't their opinions be the ones you want to hear?
I wanna hear both.
Uh, I, yeah, I think that's, I think we want to hear both, but we need to understand both perspectives to understand to have a more effective.
I mean, I I I understand I'm a little bit out of turn here, I'm just saying the purpose of the wayfinding is to bring outsiders in. Not to keep, I
And correct me if I'm wrong, Larry mentioned to see the different trends. So what is Groveland's, is there a reoccurring theme with Groveland? Is there a reoccurring thing with Brandon? Is there something that's reoccurring with the village? Uh, that's good to see. Is there someplace we're not connecting with and hitting? Because there's a big difference if you're coming down Grinch Hall versus if you're coming down fifteen. So I, you know, I can see a separating, and I don't think in any way, shape or form it's to um, push out any information, it's to gather the information. Am I wrong, Larry? I don't, I don't want to speak out.
Oh, that, that's correct, but it's also important to make sure that anything we do with wayfinding also um, takes in consideration residents' perspective so that we don't have an adverse impact uh, impact on the people who live here in trying to um, you know, meet the needs or the perspective of the people outside of the community as well. So it's, it's, it helps us get a good balanced view of of the big picture from all sides.
Um, Trusty Randazzo, um, Melanie, I'm just curious, how long did, how long was this query available?
Um, it was supposed to be two weeks, we pushed it out about three weeks.
Okay, do you know, um, could you say when it was? You know, like what month?
If I had that right in front of me, but.
Well, I know it encompass Thanksgiving time, right?
Yeah.
Oh, so it was just recent.
Passed Thanksgiving over the holiday weekend, it was supposed to be, you know, prior to that, so we should pass that.
Okay. No, that's, I just wanna make sure this wasn't something from September and we just got it, but if it was just recent, that's great. Okay.
Yeah, no, um, this committee has not done much, in my opinion, in about a year and a half. And in the last two months, we have um, we're on fire. And but we have to be, because um, it's, it's time and it should have been done a year ago. So
Yeah.
Yeah, no, things are moving, we got, we got legs finally and I'm, I'm excited about it.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We also have a little input um, from Matt Jenkins, who is part of DDA, who um, was part of the I was gonna say enabling us to access to the survey. Um, and he also mentioned to consider the purpose of the survey, which is up branding, and that the value, the responses were less than ninety total. So as we're talking about which which entities responded, you know, he said, just please keep that in mind. So.
Yes, thank you, yeah. Yeah, and at the last.
Put that in perspective, I know. Yeah, put that in perspective, I know we also had similar difficulty getting citizen feedback and input on surveys we sent out for the master plan. So it it is not an easy thing to get. Um, you know, a large participation on surveys about our community, unfortunately.
And I think that's great for, like you say, two and a half, three weeks, that was good, good responses. So thank you very much to the committee for working hard.
Yeah, I still have um, some more.
Go ahead.
Okay, so that was the survey part, so I will bring back to, um, and we will present, the committee will present the logos and the taglines. But in the meantime, um, we need to do an inventory of signage. Um, and I I had asked if, uh, I asked Dale if the village manager or the DPW supervisor had a list, uh, an existing inventory of signs, and they do not. And I asked if not, um, who would be responsible to conduct this inventory list, as I personally feel this is a village manager or a DPW um, supervisors specialty or I I I think this is up their alley. Um, they are on our streets every day. Um, they have the ability as they go around, make their rounds, work on streets. Um, Dale, as he drives around the village, which he should be doing daily, um, to have an inventory sheet um, with a legend of sort, whether, and and Dale talked to me about this, so he understands thoroughly, um, where it would have a legend and you would mark on streets, um, if they have even stop signs, if they have street signs, if they have a lion's or um, a mason sign or a whatever the signs are, because now that you pay attention to it, you are going to see these signs all over the place. Um, so we need to get an inventory list. From that inventory list, what we do is um, decide what could be removed, what needs to be um, painted, what really needs to be replaced? And we inventory and put it in a priority list. And this will help us to plan, to be five-year plan, it will help um, with the CIP, it will help with the budgeting. Um, but we need to have this list completed. And I strongly feel that this is a village manager or a DPW supervisor um, task to do. Um, Dale says that they're so busy that they don't, they can't do it, they don't have time. Um, so if that's the case, we probably need to look at what's going on with both their jobs to see where we can get some efficiency happening if they're that overwhelmed. Um, but if they can't do it, um, I will certainly go out and Wayne has volunteered, Wayne Wills has volunteered and will do it. Um, I just don't feel it's correct. Um, but once we get that together, that will help in phase two um, that we'll be moving into, and that's when someone from Oakland County helps us determine um, what signs should be replaced or removed, or where they should be placed. Maybe we have our gateway sign placed incorrectly. Um, but that's phase two of the project that will happen after we choose the logo and tagline. Any questions on that part? Other than who should be doing the inventory list?
And I was gonna say, that's the only question I have. I hesitate, um, you know, for any, any committee to decide this is what needs to be done and then dump it on somebody else, and I don't mean that, you know, just in general. Um, to ask and say, hey, this is our timeframe and do you have a chance to get to it within that timeframe, I think is great. Um, but to expect, you know, when we don't know the list of priorities that they have, um, certainly we can't control snowfall and, you know, things like that. So I I think to say, hey, this is our goal and is that something you can meet is perfectly reasonable, but if not, I think to have plan B to say, hey, you know, that's no problem, okay, you got half of it, quarter of it, none of it, we'll, we'll take over from there. Um, I think that would be, you know, a fair, happy medium.
Yeah, and tha- and that's what it was. So um, so what does that mean then? Just so I have a clear understanding, is this.
That's just my opinion, is that you say, hey, can you help us with this project? We'd like it done by this time and if not, let me know and get back to me. They can give it back, you empty or, like I said, a quarter done, whatever, you know, works in with what they're doing, I'm not sure. Um, but, you know.
Well, I I'm not sure either, and I I, I had asked you too if they were, you know, very busy and overwhelmed right now. I understand the Christmas and the luminaries, and now they're taking down the wreaths, but it's not something that we needed tomorrow. Um, but you didn't seem to think that they were overwhelmed and busy either. So I guess what's the answer here?
Well, like I said, that's just my input, is that you give them a date and say, hey, can this be done by then, and if not, then have a plan B to where it can be done by alternative people. We don't want to dump on our staff things that are being, projects that are coming up with by our committees. Um, you know, if we all did that, obviously we wouldn't have any staff available at any time. So that's all I was saying.
Right, um, but this is something that the village um, committed to. Um, I don't know, a year ago. So it is a a program that was there, you guys admitted to, so there will be times that, you know, we need your help.
Yeah, I I, if I could offer a suggestion, I also um, might suggest that if we're not sure that the village staff themselves uh, has the capacity to take on this and have it completed in time, uh, perhaps we could also check with the DDA if there are any DDA volunteers that could maybe assist with this task as well. Um, that could be another possibility to get some people to be able to help put some time into trying to identify and and create this list.
Well, don't forget all three entities are a part of wayfinding, so you know, you could.
Yes.
Council, planning, DDA, any, any.
That's why I was mentioning the DDA, because I know that they have a lot of volunteers they use for events and things, and with events being kind of slow, maybe they have some volunteers that might be willing to help with uh, this effort. I see Courtney smiling over there.
Okay, well.
No, I'm laughing, I think I have all these volunteers that I don't actually have.
I know, and I know that, I re- I recognize that. Um, but all right, I will go in and talk one more time with Dale and I will see if um, he can possibly find some time, and if not, then uh, you know, we'll take care of it, but I just want it on the record that I strongly feel that this is a village manager um, task um, and DPW um, task as well. Um, and then the la- the last thing we have um, is um, for wayfinding, we we need to um, we need to figure out how to get a line item in the budget for wayfinding. Um, I know I had asked for this, your last um, budget meeting and um, it was ignored, so uh, further down the agenda, I have a way to save some money and I'm gonna ask for that money to be put in a line item for wayfinding. We need to fund this because it was committed to and the DDA was gracious enough to give us the grant. And I don't want to waste this money and I'm not starting a project um, that we're not gonna finish. It it happens too much in the village and I won't be be part of that. We're gonna finish this and do it right. Um, so we need to commit to it and do a five-year plan and and have a line item in the budget for wayfinding. And that's it.
Okay, Melanie, I do have a question around the wayfinding um, progress so far. You've talked about doing an inventory of the signs and you have the survey from the people. Um, has the wayfinding committee created some kind of a list of the points of interest that are within the village? Uh, in other words, the locations where we would need some wayfinding signage to direct people to get to those points of interest? Do you have a, a?
That's what the phase two is, and we actually have help with, um, Oakland County helps us. They guide us in that um, determination. That's part of.
So that's, that's still to be done then?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, because I know that's also an important piece, is, you know, it's
Yes.
One thing to say, okay, we have science pointing this, that and the other, but it's also another thing to identify, well, where should we have the science pointing to?
And and that's, yeah, and and you're absolutely right, Larry. Um, and they will, they help guide us to where we should be placing them, why we shouldn't or should, you know, or yes, we, they are, it's their expertise and and they're, they are going to guide us and teach us.
Perfect, I will wait to hear the future updates.
Thanks, Larry.
All right, Melanie, did you have anything else for us at this time?
Um, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is D, our Heritage Garden Space Discussion. I'll send that over to Dale.
I recommend to the council that you table this item to the next agenda. Uh, I received today some information from the county with regard to assistance with that, but it was just received today and I haven't had a chance to thoroughly review it or get it to the rest of council.
So that's something we can automatically move down to unfinished business because that has been unfinished business um, at at our prior agenda, correct?
Well, you can just table it till the next meeting or um.
Whatever council's leisure is.
Yeah, I I, my recommendation to you is that you put it over to the next agenda.
All right. Is that council's leisure? Would we like a motion for that?
We need a motion, or we just have consensus to postpone it and have it in unfinished?
I think you should have a motion to postpone it.
Okay.
It's an agenda item.
And make a motion to postpone the discussion on Heritage Gardens space until our January meeting later this month. And that should be placed under an item of unfinished business at our next meeting.
What is the date of the, is it January twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have a support for that?
Uh, the part, can we put January twenty-fifth in, or do I have to make an amended motion?
Um.
I I agree to amend it to include January twenty-fifth as the date.
Thank you.
And any postponement will automatically be the next meeting unless clarified and changed to a six months or whatever. So we have a motion on the table by Councilman Haynes, part of a Councilman Nivell. Do we have any questions or discussions on the postponement?
Oh, I have a quick question. When will we be um, getting the information from you, Dale?
Shortly. Not, not within the next couple of minutes, but shortly.
We'll look forward to that from Dale and and I think Matt as well, that was a DDA um, assist, correct?
Yes.
All right, so we.
Uh, this is, this is Trusty George. I do have a a comment on this heritage garden. Um, one of the things that comes to mind that that I recall is it is unsightly. All right, and as such, I thought we came to the conclusion that we would basically take it all out, whatever, whatever shrubbery or or plants or things like that that we have in there. And that we were going to allow citizens to come by should they wish to take some of these plants and and flowers and things. And just basically remove them and whatever was left, we would simply have our DPW removed and the ground would be cleared. Am I right with that, Courtney, or am I off on that?
The, the DDA and council made it known to the public that they could come in and take whatever plants that they wanted um, during several weekends during the farmer's market. And they did. Uh,
So couldn't we just level the field?
No.
Well, that costs money, which you have none to pay for it.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I can hope.
And so, so I have been trying to get you to let me do it through the DDA, which hasn't happened yet, but we are working on this, um, the information that that Dale received today from the county, the assistance from the county um, is technical assistance that the DDA provided. Um, you know, that we, we, we got and and provided for uh, planning for the area. Um, um, and so the, I mean, next steps are just next steps. We, we have not got to go ahead is or haven't had a moment, Matt would know better than me as he's been in in communication, but um, the, the time has not been ripe to tear it out.
Okay. And Courtney, I guess what I'm thinking too is right now this, if we're trying to remove things from that garden, this is a bad time of year to be doing it. But if we had some plan in place to come springtime, whatever is in there, we're getting rid of, and we would have a plan by springtime for what we want to do with that property.
Well.
Is that possible, or is that just no go? Again, I realize there's nothing we're gonna do now, but it's winter.
That's okay, there's, there's a couple of things that are going on here. I had a plan. That's okay. There's, there's a couple of things that are going on here. I had a plan, um, or some semblance of a plan, which kind of got stalled out. Um, as there was some discussion as to who actually has the right to the garden and, and different things like that, who put the plant, who, you know, who this and who that and, and where, um, responsibilities lie and things like that. And so there was, it kind of stalled out. So then at that point, it was decided that we would go ahead and, um, gather this technical assistance from the county for the planning, which we have done, which Dale again just received today. Um, and next steps, I mean, again, next steps are next steps. It just, um, if the next step is to, to flatten it, then the next step is to flatten it and we'll go from there. It just, uh, you know, it, it stands where it stands. It's, it's a work in progress. It's being moved forward on. But because, um, because of earlier discussions of who owns and who's responsible and different things like that, um, it's been a slow progress.
Well, at the moment, we have a motion to postpone this. Will you have a chance to have updates to us by our meeting later this month? January 25th? Okay.
Do we have any other questions or comments from council? All right, Jenna, please, can we have a roll call on the postponement of the Heritage Garden?
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
Van Dazzle?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries five zero. All right, I'm E as our standing committee assignment discussion. That is a reminder, um, that the, uh, requests for the standing committees are due on January 15th. They will be decided at the January 25th, um, meeting. Please give me the items that you are most interested in, um, and also the items that you may be least interested in. Um, if you have questions on what the standing committees are, please look that up in your, um, policies and procedures. I believe it's page 14 on, and you can get a chance to see what they entail. Uh, the other thing is if you'd like to know, just, um, you can ask obviously Dale or I, who was on it last, kind of talk with them, get a chance to, to learn a little more information. Um, I encourage everybody to try something new. Those of you that have been on committees before, I encourage those that haven't to try something that you may be out of your comfort zone. Um, I will never forget, my first one was the one I never wanted to do and I survived. So just keep that in mind. Um, I'm excited this year will be the, uh, first committee I haven't been on. I'm going to steal it because it's the only one I haven't been on and I'm not going to tell you what it is. So go ahead and please pick whatever you would like and maybe what you would least like, so you don't get that one. Um, give me some options because there's lots of us and lots of things. And keep in mind, we also do have additional people coming on, um, that will also be excited to make those same decisions. That's all. And please put it in writing to me, text me, um, email me, send me a letter by January 15th, please. Any questions on that? All right, item F, um, I'm just going to continue to keep talking. That is electronic or paper agendas. Um, please let Jenna know, and she probably doesn't even have it in front of her because I didn't tell her, or you can tell me. Um, if you would like an electronic version only, if you do not want paper dropped off at your house or absolutely everything, um, from each agenda, um, for each meeting, I should say packet, not agenda. Um, what you would still get is your mail that came to you. You'd still get a time sheet. Um, and the only thing that we had been including for those who choose electronic is a copy of the agenda. Um, if there was, say, the fire department report or the, um, auditor's report, you might receive something along that lines. Um, so if you would choose electronic only, you can either speak up now or send, um, Jenna and Dale a note, please, and let them know that you are electronic only. And that will definitely help us on time and paper and all those other good things. Um, they are on documents on demand, obviously, every single meeting.
Trustee George, could, could we, um, have a, a, a discussion on this briefly?
Sure, if you'd like to, go right ahead.
Discussion to me is it's the 21st century. We should be going electronic, all of us. And if we don't know how, we need to learn, and that includes myself to learn.
Well, I encourage that.
But I don't, I don't need people come, I mean, it's nice to come to my, my house to drop stuff off. But I think if we had it, added all electronic for all of us, then, then that would, that would be great. And any, from Jenna's standpoint, any corrections or things like that, it's instantaneous. And we got it, we got a spot to go, go get them and that'd be great.
Um, Trustee Nivell, I'm okay with that for, uh, uh, fast amount of the packet, but there are certain things that personally I would, I would love printed out still. Um, I make notes, highlights, especially maps and that kind of thing. And I don't have a, uh, I have a little inkjet cartridge thing that runs out after like 10 pages. So I rely on the office to print that out. So, um,
And that's why I said it should be a personal, right, personal reason. Everybody has their own why they do or don't like. I write all over my agenda, nothing else, you know, everything else for me is electronic. Everybody has their own thing.
Yeah, I do some both. I mean, I do it both, but for some things I like the printed, um, piece that I can actually write on and highlight and, um, have in front of me. It's just a preference.
And Larry, is something you wanted to add?
Uh, I was going to say, Trustee Hayden signed me up for the electronic. Um, if there is any time when I see something in the electronic packet that I might need printed out, I can always make a request to have just that section printed out if I need it, I suppose.
Right. And, and no pressure, but just to keep in mind, especially the colored pages, it's, I think we have over $2,000 in just copies alone for council, not to mention the time that it takes to deliver to all of us. Um, that is, you know, a, a, a employee paid per hour. So just, just with that in mind, um, what, what you want.
Can, can we come pick them up ourselves? I don't think they need to be delivered. I, I pick mine up. I think everyone should be able to pick their packet up.
Not everybody's available between nine and five during work business hours either. So I think that's, you know, the necessity of that. I think that could be a preference in general, if somebody would like to. Um, you're more than welcome to pick them up, absolutely.
Okay.
You just need to know what you want.
We all need to turn in our order.
Jenna, you can sign me up for electronic.
I'm electronic as well.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments on that at this point? Like I said, you can go ahead and give your detailed, um, menu order to them at any time. All right, so item G is the selection of councilperson and our open seat. And we have Dale who just, um, took a quick drink. That is going, whoops, I'm sorry, hold on, paper agenda, let me, I'm one page off. Um, there are three applicants for our current trustee position, which was vacated by, um, Mark Robinson. And our three applicants are Kay Green, Wayne Wills, and Keith Dialis. We welcome you all here this evening. I see you're all available with us, so welcome. Um, we would like to have a chance to, all of, um, the council members have the ad that was placed in, that they have all met the requirements to, uh, turn in their request and their resumes. We've had a chance to read those over. What we're going to do is take them one at a time and have council members have a chance to ask questions. Um, I should say backtrack. They get a chance to introduce themselves. Council members get a chance to ask questions. Um, we will do that one, two, three, and we'll get a chance to do that, and then we can discuss, uh, a motion on that. Um, I hesitate to do this all at the same time, but I, we can also hop into the fact that unfortunately there is an, an additional position that has opened since this point. Um, council does also need to have that discussion as to whether, um, they are looking to, again, repeat the process, have the ad put in the plate, paper and give the two weeks, um, as we do for open positions. So keep that in mind as we go to, after we have the, I'm sorry, after we have the interviews, before we go to the motions. All right. So the first, um, we'll take them in the order that they've received. That was Kay Green. If you'd like to introduce yourself, please, and then we can get a chance to ask you any questions or have any comments that we may have for you.
Sure. Well, thank you. My name is Kay Green. I've lived in the village for 32 years. Um, as I said on my, uh, resume, I was on council for 20 years, most of that being president pro temp. I'm well aware of the issues, uh, you know, some, obviously things have progressed, but I've tried to keep up on things in the village. It's very important to me and it was important to me enough to say I would like to be back on council because there's so many things that need to be done and they just were not getting done, uh, because of whatever issues that were happening. And, um, I'm a team player. I, you know, I love people, so I, uh, believe I offer a lot. Uh, I've been on, served on every committee that there was, except this way, wayfinding one, that was new to me. Uh, and, uh, I was on planning commission for 18 of the years out of the, the 22. And, um, uh, ask me whatever you'd like.
Thank you. So council members, go right ahead. Any questions or comments?
Okay, I know that we worked together back in the nineties when I was first on council, so.
We did. Yep.
So I'm familiar with your history and, and, uh, appreciate your past service and, and I know we can work together and get along.
Thank you, Larry.
I'm Trustee Nivell, and just a, a, a comment to, um, I worked with Kay when I was first, uh, elected and didn't know what the heck I was doing. And she helped mentor me, um, in regards to making motions and closed sessions and, and, um, she was fabulous to work with. I learned a lot from her. I respect her highly. Um, I think she would be a, a great asset. Quite frankly, all three of these candidates, I, I want all three of them. And we can find a place. I just know we can, it's all three, uh, this is a win-win-win, I, I believe. Um, but I highly recommend Kay.
Thank you, Melanie.
I really do.
Any other questions? Okay.
Trustee Grandassel, uh, this is actually for all three, if you can, all three of the, uh, candidates. If you can just incorporate this answer, uh, when it gets to you, to you, um, the openings came up, um, what, what kept you, I'm just kind of curious, what kept you from running, um, you know, for the election itself versus support, you know, putting in the applications now, which I appreciate. But that's, that's just the one question I have for all three.
I guess my, my answer is I intended to, but then during COVID and everything, it, the, the timeframes escaped me and I just did not, um, did not, you know, sign up for it. I mean, that's, that's the real answer.
That's what we like, real answers. Any other questions for Kay at this time? Tony stole mine.
That's a big question, by the way.
Pat, anything from you?
No, I, I agree. I, I think, um, all three of them are, are excellent candidates. I, I pleased with it. We'll, we'll, I'd like to come out with two of them tonight, personally. Yeah, and yeah, I think they're real good.
Thank you. Kay, anything else you can think of adding?
Um, just, you know, I know many of you, I have worked with, with some of you and certainly have seen the work of a few of you too, e- even not being on the council. And, um, you know, I, I welcome the opportunity if, uh, I am so selected.
Thank you. We appreciate you, you requesting and we appreciate having, meeting you.
Thank you.
And next up on our list, we have Wayne Wills. And please introduce yourself and then we'll have a chance for council to ask you questions as well.
Wayne Wills, I've lived in the village, uh, 40, 43 years and, uh, have served, uh, as, uh, chair and, uh, as a member of the planning commission in the 1980s. Uh, back, you know, several decades ago, served on the fire board, uh, in the nineties, school board. But, uh, and then of course, between 2010 and 2018 as village president. Uh, the reason why I didn't run this time around is, uh, quite frankly, I got tired of having to reelect myself or be a, be elected every two years. The, you know, the trustees get elected every four years, the president every two years. So it, uh, becomes somewhat cumbersome. Also, I am a big fan of bringing in new blood. I, several of you, um, that I'm looking at on the Zoom meeting tonight, I approached back various times to run, uh, for various positions in the village. So I think that, I think it's important to get new blood, new perspectives. Um, so that's why I did not run. I, I endorsed and I supported heavily, uh, several, several people. And it was my intent at the time to bring in, uh, ideas and as well as personnel who would be able to, um, reset our goals, redefine our goals and then pursue those goals and, uh, to finalize those goals and to make sure that they're completed. There's been too many goals along the way that have, uh, have been, uh, because of knee jerk reactions on prior councils that have been, uh, set aside. They've been forgotten about. And there are several, I don't want to get into them right now, but some of you know who they, what those projects are. And they're gone. They're just disappeared. Uh, and so, you know, I, I pass off to Melanie for basically wanting to pin down with respect to the wayfinding committee, the, uh, process and actually get it in, in the budget, have it as a placeholder, a, a line item, if you will. Uh, so that's, that to me is important because what's going to happen in life as we've seen in the past is that, uh, things come along, things break, equipment breaks, uh, drains collapse. And, uh, so all of a sudden, any, any plans that we had for a capital improvement plan gets shoved aside. And, uh, so, you know, we need to stay on course from time to time as best we can.
Wayne, what questions does council have for Wayne at this time? Want to council members have questions for Wayne at this time?
See how good we know you, Wayne?
Pardon me?
See how good we know you? Well, I haven't,
I'm an open book.
I have not served with you.
That's true.
I have, I have worked with you, um, and I love working with you. You're, you're buttoned up, you're organized. Uh, and if you say you're going to do it, you do it. Uh, so those are things I love.
Oh, thank you.
And Wayne, I, I will add a comment that I, I certainly appreciate the fact that you, even though you chose not to continue as president, that you still continued to attend our council meetings and provide input. And that's helped provide valuable perspective to us as a council during, uh, you know, these somewhat tumultuous, uh, past couple of years. Hopefully things will go smoother at this point.
Amen.
But yeah, it's always good hearing your advice on, at those meetings.
Thank you.
And any other council members have anything to state or question? Wayne, is there anything you had to close with for us?
No, I, I just think that, uh, having served on the DDA for all of my term as presidency and then the, the last two years as well, a total of 10, I, I've just got to tell you that I am really, really impressed and enthused with our DDA director. Uh, the, the, our DDA, DDA president, Courtney, and her leadership and Matt's. And we're getting some real good traction. And I, I really have a passion for the downtown. Uh, prior council members didn't even want anything to do with the DDA. They didn't even want to attend a meeting. Uh, so, you know, it was, it was an uphill struggle and now I, I see some really good things happening. Uh, you know, between Melanie and Courtney, that, that mural is absolutely incredibly wonderful. Um, and I, I really felt, I really felt passionate about our downtown. And, uh, so it's, uh, it's, it's really, there's a lot of good traction happening. And I, I really also want to see some, uh, some synergies between the township and also Groveland Township. Uh, and so we can work together on more and more things. So, but, but again, but again, we have some good people out there, so I, I can be second fiddle. I don't need to, uh, I've been there, done that. I, you know, I, I don't actually need the position of, you know, when I, when I saw that Keith was involved again and, and even Kay, I, you know, those are good candidates. So, you know, I, I can, I can certainly wait another day if, if need be. You know, I, I can, I can certainly wait another day if, if need be. Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that you've joined us and that you've applied. And last but of course not least is Mr. Keith Dialis. If you could please share with us anything you'd like to share and then we'll get a chance to ask you some questions.
Yes. Good evening, council. Keith Dialis, one ninety Crescent Hill Drive. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, so yes, I was on the village council previously as well as the streets committee and the planning commission. I had to resign a few years back due to my work. I was traveling a lot at the time and I, I just couldn't. Be available for meetings. My work situation has changed. I'm with a different employer now, so I'm able to attend meetings and I'd like to get back involved in the village. Been here almost seven years and I'm excited, enjoy living here and excited about what the village is doing and want to be more of a part in it. I was going to, I was debating, I was hemming and hawing about applying for, running for village council. And then I just hawed too, too long and then missed my window. So when the, when the opportunity came up to put in my application, I did so. So I'm, I'm looking forward to council's decision on who they're going to have fill the two vacancies.
Thank you. Do we have council members who would like to ask a question or make a comment at this time for Keith Dialis?
I'm trustee Nivout. Well, Keith is my neighbor. Okay, and I love him and his family. So I am in a very hard predicament here because these three people are friends. So this is very difficult. And I just want all three of you to know that and I'm going to reiterate again, I would love to find a place for all three of them. Because I think all three have it. Keith, when on planning commission was instrumental in getting us started with the CIP. And to me, that was huge because I, I was like waving a flag and couldn't get attention and that was awesome. So. I just wanted to point that out. But yeah, I mean, him and his family are great and. Yeah, I'm in a real pickle.
Any other questions or comments from council members at this time? All right, hearing none, Keith, is there something you'd like to leave us with?
Um, just that, again, we've been here for almost seven years, planning on being here for a long time. I'm enthusiastic about the village. I know Kay and Wayne are obviously have way more experience than I do, would be great, great people to be on the council. So I don't, I don't hold anybody personal, any personal decisions on if you go with someone else. But I, again, I just thought I could help out and if it makes sense and you guys pick me, that'd be great.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here with us this evening. All right, did any other council members have anything that they thought of? They wanted to backtrack with a specific. Candidate at this time? Anything that came to mind that you'd like to go back and, and question any of them?
Nothing for me.
I don't know if somebody asked, you know, one that you'd like to know from the other. All right, so at this time, what we're looking for is if somebody is interested in making a motion. For the open seat from Mark Robinson at this time. Any council members interested in. Sharing there?
Is it possible for us to fill both seats this evening?
Well, at this point, we're addressing Mark Robinson's seat and then we can have a discussion as to how we'd like to proceed with the other seat. We have not even accepted a resignation yet. We can do that and open the seat. I hesitate and we can talk about that later, but not say that on our agenda. That's what. But let's handle this first, which is the first item, please, and then we can go into discussion.
Okay, I make a motion that we appoint Kay Green to fill the vacant position left by the resignation of Mark Robinson from village council.
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Nivout. Do we have any questions or discussion at this time in supporting Kay Green as a candidate? All right, are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, Jenna, can we please, would you mind reading the motion and then requesting a vote?
We have a motion by Hayden, supported by Nivout to appoint Kay Green to the vacant position left by Mark Robinson.
Thank you.
Nivout?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. We welcome you, Kay. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We look forward to seeing you in just a couple of weeks.
Yes.
All right, so the next discussion is the unfortunate seat that has been left open by Ron Sutton. As we kind of touched on, there is an open seat. It was not posted and it is not on the agenda. With that said, the decision can be made to change that. It's up to you guys. I'm just leaving you with what my thoughts are.
Go ahead, Tony.
I, I just had a question regarding Kay's appointment, real quick. That it's only going until what, the twenty, twenty twenty-two?
Right, for the remaining term of Mark Robinson.
No, it's supposed to be until the first election.
Which would be in twenty twenty-two and that's also when Mark Robinson's term would be up anyway, so.
Yes.
Right, yes.
It just happens to be that way, yes.
Yeah, yep, very good, yep.
Um, I would like to make a, I was done with that, but I would like to make a motion to make the decision on the. Placement of. Ron Sutton's seat respectfully.
Okay, we would need a motion to accept the resignation and the open seat?
Okay, so I make a motion to accept the resignation for the open seat.
Or, or Ron Sutton. Yes.
Do we have a support?
Support.
Trustee George.
All right, motion by Councilman Randazzo, supported by Councilman George. Do we have any questions or discussions on that motion? All right.
Trustee Nivout, oh, yes. So are we going to discuss if we're going to fill that or repost it?
We haven't voted on it yet as to the resignation. We have to accept the resignation.
Right, let's do that.
I love your enthusiasm. All right, any other questions or comments on the resignation at this point? All right, Jenna, please come in on a roll call.
Mandazzo?
Was it me?
Yes.
Oh, um, yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nivout?
Yes.
Rice? Yes.
Motion carries five zero to accept the resignation of Ron Sutton.
Just to act clear, if we didn't accept his resignation, would he have to come to the next council meeting?
I hope so.
That would be lovely.
Oh.
I miss him.
Oh, yeah.
All right, and then Melanie, I believe you were asking a question next.
Um, yeah, just. So do we have to repost or that is just an option?
I think it's just an option. I think that you have, you have asked of the community who would be interested in serving on the council. You received word from three individuals who said they were. I think you could do either one. You could repost. For the new opening, but it wasn't specifically only for, to replace Mark Robinson. It was simply to, to replace someone on the council. So it's my opinion, you, you could do it either way.
Oh, um, okay, well, I would say we do it because if these are the only three that. Showed interest, then I, I highly doubt that. We'd get more people to show interest and these three stepped up quickly. And like I said, this is a win-win-win.
Yep. Agreed, support.
That was just a comment.
I, I also agree. I think we, we can, we have three very good candidates and we have two positions. I don't see a need to repost because I think that we can easily fill both seats tonight with good candidates.
And I hate to be the naysayer, we do not have a policy in effect, but I know. Last council filled a seat without opening it up to the community as a backdoor politics and I know we weren't happy with that. The ad does say after the resignation of a council person, we did not accept the resignation of this council person. I also know it, we may have more people and we have wonderful people and I'm hoping they reapply. But we also may have more people specifically in honor of Ron Sutton. We also have people who said they were going to apply that weren't able to or didn't in time, missed the vote. I believe we need to be fair, open and transparent and I believe we need to post. It's a two-week time period. They will, you know, would be, miss one meeting. But again, that's just my personal opinion that we do it on board and right. Again, there is no policy stating that, though.
Trustee Randazzo the question. Are we going to be able to? Fill, if, if we wait, would we be able to fill this by January twenty-fifth?
On that date, yes.
Not before, no.
We would have the two weeks.
If that's what you're asking.
Right.
No, no, I, I just. So it would be our next meeting, January twenty.
We would put it in the paper this weekend with, with the request that we have their applications by the fifteenth. And then it would be so we could make the decision on the twenty-fifth.
So they, like I said, it would be a one-meeting gap. There would be a difference. They wouldn't be, you know, at that meeting. They would be voted in at that meeting and then they would.
And if we posted this weekend, that only gives one week for new, more candidates to fly.
You'd have to have them by the twenty-second.
One week, because if he's posting this weekend, which would be the Saturday's paper on the ninth, they have to be in by the fifteenth. That's one week they have to respond.
Be in until the night.
How long was the other one?
Two weeks. We post for two weeks. We have a two-week timeframe to post.
Yeah, the twentieth would be two weeks. Well, you get it in on a Wednesday and it comes out on the Saturday, so it would be out in the tw- the twenty-third would be two official weeks.
Then, then we would say they would have, if we give them two weeks to respond, it'd be until the twenty-second. And then that's the Friday before the council meeting.
Right.
Right, so if anybody turned them in that day, then they would be forwarded to us that day. That's the day we normally get our packets, so.
So we could vote on the twenty-fifth.
And we also have to consider, and I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth, either of the two that are still candidates may or may not have applied. I mean, they get a chance to apply. Maybe one of them would say, no, thank you. At this point, I don't know. I'm just saying, we had one open position and we're voting two people in. I hesitate to do that without process, but.
Well, I, I would, I would like to add to that to say that according to the general law of village act. It is only our responsibility to fill council vacancies when they come up. There is nothing indicated as to any specific process that needs to be followed. It just says that it's a responsibility of the council to fill any vacant positions. And I feel that we should try because of, as has been pointed out, we have a lot of topics and a lot of things we need to do. I think it's. Important for us to fill the position as soon as we can in order to ensure that we have. A full council to work on all the topics that we have facing our community going into twenty twenty-one. So I would be in favor of filling that, this meeting, because we already have two good candidates and I would be in favor of filling that so that we have a full council at our next meeting.
Support. Trustee George.
Make a motion then if.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought they already did.
I was just, I was, this was just a discussion right now, okay.
Right, if you want the motion, you would make a motion of who you would like to.
In that case, oh, oh, so we make a motion to appoint who we would like to fill that position then?
Tonight.
Okay, in that case, based upon. Well, I will add that in the discussion. So I will make a motion to appoint Keith Dialis to the. Open position that was vacated by Ron Sutton's passing.
Hold on, have we accepted that we, that the council wants to, wants to do it tonight? Don't we have to vote on that first?
You, you don't have to vote on it, no. There's no procedure to do it.
All right, so basically what we're, what we're in implied agreement on is that we're going to vote tonight, is that correct?
Yes. If I'm making a motion to appoint somebody, we're calling it tonight.
Motion is passed, we can decide that.
There's a motion on the table.
I supported the motion.
And a motion on the table from Councilman, ah, Hayden, supported by Councilman Nivout. Do we have any questions, comments or discussion on? The appointment of Keith Dialis for the open seat from Ron Sutton?
Yes, I would like to comment on my motion. The reason I. Decided to nominate Keith for the position is because, as Wayne pointed out, I think it's important to have. Different perspectives and views and I think Keith would bring a little different perspective being. You know, he's a bit younger and has not been in the community quite as long as some of the others. And besides that, I already know Wayne is putting in a lot of great. Things for us already being a member of the DDA, so I would like to offer this opportunity to Keith to step up and bring that different perspective.
Trustee Randazzo, I just have a question real quick. Is, is Kay being appointed now, is she going to be part of this vote here or is it just?
She, she's not sworn in, so it's just.
I thought that. Yeah, I thought that. I just wanted to make sure.
Good question. Um, Keith, if you don't mind, can you tap in? Could we ask if you're still available for this appointment?
I am still available.
Okay, just double checking before we go further, thanks.
Yep.
All right, did anybody else have any questions? And, and I guess we can open it too, if you have any questions for Keith that you happen to it.
I have a comment, though. I just want to be clear that even though this is for a four-year term, it will only go to twenty twenty-two.
Correct, November twenty-two, twenty-two election.
Yeah.
Correct. Good point.
So we know, just so it's on record and everybody's clear.
Yep.
Because this is kind of funky, so.
Yes, we will have a very large, heavy election seat in twenty twenty-two. Everyone get two.
Trustee Randazzo, Keith, were you aware of that, that it was, when you, when you filled out your resume and submitted it? Were you aware that it would only go to twenty twenty-two?
I was not, but that's fine.
Okay, I mean, you were set to do the, the four years or, yeah, the four years, right?
Robinson's was only two and that's what he applied for.
I know. My question though to Keith is. Knowing that he did not know it was going to be for two years. You thought it was going to be for four, are you still? Do you still want to do this?
I'm still good, yep.
Okay, that was just my question.
Any other questions or comments before we head to a vote? All right, Jenna, I think we're ready, please.
George?
No.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nivout?
Yes.
Mandazzo?
Yes.
Rice? Yes.
Motion carries four to one. Congratulations, Keith, and welcome.
Thank you very much.
You as well.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, Wayne. We appreciate you stepping up in your interest.
And Wayne, I hope you still will attend our meetings and, and continue to work with the DDA because as I said, we really do value your input.
I have, I have some ideas for Wayne. I'll talk to him.
All right, my stuff is H, which is our council pay and I'm going to send that over to Melanie to start us off.
Okay. All right, so just a little back history quickly. I started in two thousand sixteen to bring awareness to. Some of the abuses of pay that I thought were happening with some council members. And when we got the, there was a thing from a former council person, Scornica, that Dale had put in our packet as well. That, that was another example of what I, what I thought were abuses of pay. what I what I felt were abuses of pay. Um, at times, people will just go in and talk to the clerk and put down that they had a meeting, and then they'll go in and talk to the village manager and put down that they had a meeting. And this has been approved. And it's absolutely not a meeting. However, we do not have this um, the policy written in our rules and procedures of what exactly a meeting, an approved meeting is and how that's approved. So we need to do that sooner rather than later. Um, and in that way, uh, there are approved meetings and people are just not doing their own thing. And that has happened a lot, um, actually since two thousand and nine. That type of abuse has been going on. And I I asked in two thousand sixteen and I asked again, um, I think in two thousand eighteen, and then I also um, that's what I ran on, uh, part of what I ran on was uh the pay and um kind of rating this in. And on that note, um, once we can declare what a meeting is, what an approved meeting is, and have that um in our rules and regulations and policies. Um, as all of you know, fifteen thousand dollars was put in the budget this year for council pay. Um, last year in two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, the amount budgeted was ten thousand five hundred dollars. Whoops, I am sorry. Sorry, um, we went over that expenditure by four thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Um, so this um fiscal year, the council budgeted in um in July um fifteen thousand dollars, which is an increase of forty-five hundred dollars over last year. So if each council member's paid fifty-five dollars and the village president has paid seventy-five um dollars per meeting, um, if we did twelve meetings, our normal once a month, it's four hundred and five bucks for a meeting. Um, that would bring us to an annual cost of four thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. But yet we have fifteen thousand dollars in that line item. If council met twice a month, which is twenty-four meetings, that would be nine thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, so just under ten. But yet we have fifteen thousand dollars in there. So from the documentation I gave you, I um contacted Goodrich, Holly, let's see what else, Groveland, Brandon, Clarkston, Lake Orion. And let's see, and that's it. And then, of course, ours. And I did a survey of what they're paid compared to what we are paid. And find out, um, many areas do a fixed ordinance, that they do not go over a certain amount. No matter how many meetings you have, there is a budgeted amount, and that's all you can spend, and you attend those meetings. And you can get paid quarterly. You can get paid yearly or annually. Um, it all depends on your policy and and what you vote on. Um, Goodrich trustees, they don't get paid any more than eight hundred and forty dollars a year. And it doesn't matter how many meetings they attend. That's it. That's all they get. Um, one of my favorite ones is, let's see, where were they? Oh, okay, right here, Lake Orion, they get uh they get paid a hundred, oh, I'm sorry, they get paid ten dollars um for their planning and ZBA meetings. Ten dollars for those meetings. So each area, um, Clarkson's budget was um five thousand six hundred and fifty. They don't go over that for Clarkson. But each area um does it differently, but does it much more controlled. And that's just one of the things that I'm very passionate about, and it's got to change. And I was wondering, um, your thoughts after looking at the chart and seeing the other numbers and knowing that our budget is at fifteen thousand, I was just wondering what other trustees' thoughts were.
Trustee George, I, yeah, I appreciate uh the study, Melanie. Yeah, I find it underw- underwhelming how low some of those people are actually getting paid. I personally feel this, that um that a ten thousand dollar budget limit is is appropriate um from the standpoint that we're gonna get half of that just by attending regular meetings. Is that correct? Our regular monthly meetings? I I can, I can do fifty, well, I can do fifty bucks times ten, ten months and get five hundred, right? So I'm just saying, if if all I if all I bill for is that, I get five hundred. If I'm if I'm attending a legitimate committee meeting such as Planning Commission, DDA, things like this, I guess Parks and Rec, I think that also should be paid fifty-five. This is my own personal opinion.
Right, and I want to hear your.
That's pretty, but that's pretty much it. If I go in and talk to Dale, I do not expect to get paid. If I'm doing work o- outside of my own, I don't expect to get paid. But I'm saying, uh, from a legitimate standpoint, I think the two typ- types of meetings that that are legit are anything that relates to to a um a a a council meeting itself, be it a a regular meeting or a special meeting or whatever. And also if we're on a particular committee and we attend that committee that committee's meeting um whenever, I think we should get paid fifty-five. But I don't want to, I don't want to, for example, and we talked on this, Melanie, I don't want to feel that I, when I when I go out and talk to to Bob on the street or when I go in and talk to him in his office, or when I go down and and do research or something like that, no, I I don't want to get paid for that. So that's my feelings on it, and I'll let it go at that. It should not get paid for that.
This is trustee Hayden, um, I I happen to be one of the ones who was a little more highly compensated. Um, but that's partly because I was on both Planning Commission and the House Committee. And uh, you know, I I feel that it it does take a significant amount of time to prepare for any meeting if you're preparing properly, and that was one thing um I always tried to do is prepare properly and fully for every meeting. That takes a lot of extra time, too. So I feel it is appropriate that we get some compensation. Um, however, I think that it also is is a little bit, I I didn't run for the sake of getting the compensation. I ran because I care about the community. I want to serve, and I feel it's just part of your duty and responsibility as an elected official to take the time to do this. So I kind of like the fixed amount and looking at Melanie's figures and throwing some numbers of my own together, I came to uh a thought of if we just set a flat one hundred dollar a month per trustee and two hundred dollar a month for the village president because she has to attend more meetings and is more involved. Um, you know, if you multiply that out by all of us, um, and add it up, the total amount, if we compensated like that on just a flat monthly basis and everybody was just expected to attend any meetings, workshops and uh, anything that comes up, that's just part of your responsibility, that would come to ninety-six hundred dollars, which would be just under that ten thousand dollar budget. And I feel that that would be a fair compensation. And I would still want to go to workshops and attend special meetings and things anyways, because I feel it's it's my responsibility and duty to the citizens. So I feel that would be fair compensation, and that would be something that I would, uh, you know, propose as a possibility of of one way to take a look at addressing it and just make it a flat rate like that, and and it would make us a very predictable budget and just that's.
Oh, goodness. Dale, are you okay?
I'm just going through a sneezing.
Um, Tony, you have any thoughts?
Um, yeah, I mean, I I like the idea of the the salary type thing, um. But I'm pretty sure some of you have already realized I'm a very open book when it comes to everything. Um, and um hmm. I I I'm kind of torn on this. Um, because honestly, I I looked at the example, I know it wasn't technically an example, but I looked at it and it kind of disgusted me. But I want to thank the people that were involved in it that they really looked at it. Um, I I need to, I need to gather more time for my thoughts um to really come up with something, uh, but I do, I do like the idea of having um, and I'm just gonna use the word a salary, um. You know, I I do like that idea.
Yeah, it's a stipend.
Or stipend, yeah. Um, because, and and I don't know, somebody can correct me on if I'm wrong, uh, but like the meeting I had with um the other three, um, they're not getting paid for it. They're just getting their hourly pay.
Are they active many?
Yeah, the like Beth and Jenna and Dale, they just, it's on the clock for them. Um, so, uh, really, I yeah, I I would like to I'd like to come up with an answer by the next meeting myself, if that's possible. I I couldn't really answer, honestly. But I like, I like the breakdown.
Tony, did you have any thoughts?
Um, I do. Um, I'm out, you know, I feel like I'm always the negative. Um, the numbers are correct, but the way the numbers come about is not correct. Um, the budget was higher, and there are multiple reasons. Yes, there were special meetings called and things like that, if you look on the back. Also have to take into account that will not show on this. We had six weeks in which we had no manager, and I was acting manager, and in that I did receive some pay. So that will be in there. That is why my pay is higher. Um, so you have to take that into account. Our manager's pay was much lower in the budget as our pay was higher. So you can't equillate that that was specifically council pay. It was, but it wasn't. So you do have to take that into account. Um, another thought in my head, council members received fifty-five dollars. I would assume on an average, you're putting in five hours. It's a two-hour prep and a three-hour meeting. I I mean, I do way more than two hours prep. That's generous.
I do days.
Right. With that, you're you're making ten bucks an hour. There's nothing wrong with that. I don't feel that's taking advantage at all. I hope you are putting in more time with that. I'm just throwing it out there.
Right, right, right.
Um, and that doesn't include trainings or conferences. That only includes meetings. So we have a whole nother budget that's training and conferences.
Right.
I know that was mentioned there, you know, whoever chooses to go to training. That would not be out of your stipend or, you know, your budget item. So we do have to keep that in mind. Um, again, then this is Tanya, that that, you know, the negative. Um, it doesn't fit with any of the other compared entities, how many they have per month or how long their meetings are. We all know Brandon Township is way more efficient than we are, and their meetings are way shorter and, you know, their budgets are way higher. So, you know, how are they getting things done that we're not? That's a question we always have.
And they are all one a month.
All of them are one a month? All these entities are one a month?
Uh, yes.
Do they include special meetings? Do they include any of their?
Did you read the chart?
Yes, I do, and only one specifies, the others don't. And then do they include any of the committees that they're on?
It says in there, it does not include special meetings with asterisk.
Only the one, so the rest don't?
No, 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 no. On the top, oh, then you have the wrong chart.
I only have two that say don't include special meetings. The other don't specify. And then we don't know if they're included with any committees or any trainings or any of those that are included in there.
Oh, no, no, no. It's all included, no matter how many committees they do, no matter how many meetings, workshops, budgets, whatever. They get a flat rate. That way they can budget.
Well, some of them don't get a flat rate. They get paid per meeting, and that's what I'm asking.
Right, and those and those should indicate, whi- which one specifically are you asking?
They don't indicate whether they include committee meetings, special meetings. They don't indicate whether they include any training.
Which one, which one are you?
Or any. What I'm saying is we need to make sure we compare one hundred percent apples to apples.
Okay, which one do you have the question?
Excuse me. If we're going to include this in our budget, we have to make sure they've included that in their budget before we start looking at numbers.
Right.
Our numbers can't match because we do include special meetings with somebody who doesn't include special. Or if we include trainings with somebody who doesn't include trainings, again, if you have two meetings a month or one, so that's, you know, we kind of
Right.
to make sure we are.
And which one do you have a question on then? Because.
Those are my questions, whether they.
They're total. They're totally.
Trainings or conferences.
They're inclusive of. No, their conferences and 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 training are separate. This was just for meetings.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yep.
Awesome.
And I thought that the chart, and and it does say, I'll send you, you must have a a different one, but I do have, it says, does not include special meetings with an asterisk.
And I do see that on two of them. The other ones I don't see it, whether it's say it's they do or don't. So that's what I'm saying. I was just asking. Some say special meetings and committees, some just say special meetings, some don't say committee. So that's what I, you know, was was trying to say.
And if it, if it does not say does not include special meetings, that means that the number that doesn't say that includes all meetings. Special committee, no matter what they call them.
So we don't know how many they have and how many they attend. It just tells me their total.
Well, they attend, normally, they they're all one a month, but no, we don't know how many workshops or budgets or committee meetings. No, and it doesn't matter because it's the budget stays the same.
Not if your lump sum includes ten meetings or five. There's a difference. So that's what I'm saying. We need to know the breakdown, how many meetings, so we can decide what our budget is compared to theirs.
Okay, well, um, all I know is fifteen thousand is way too high for a one-square-mile village. So I I'm gonna make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that the budget for village council members pay not exceed seventy-five hundred dollars. Trustees shall be paid one thousand and village president fifteen hundred annually, starting in December and paid quarterly. This stipend includes any and all types of meetings prorated if left before the term expires.
Motion by Councilman Nyveld. Do we have a support? Support for the motion? All right, hearing none. Motion is withdrawn. Do we have any additional comments or conversation?
Yeah, I think the fifteen thousand is ridiculous, and going in and talking to people and getting paid for it is unacceptable. And we need to immediately have a process in place of what is determined to be a meeting that is an approved meeting that you get paid for. So we need to really talk about what that budget should be, because fifteen thousand is ridiculous. Uh, that's terrible to do to taxpayers.
Is it an option to first, um, as you say, define what a meeting is, decide what, how many meetings are appropriate, and then come up with a number? Are we working backwards? As we haven't discussed, you know, what is the actual number of meetings that you would attend? What does it normally look like? You know, nobody's had a chance to kind of break that down. That might be a difference in what the numbers look like.
Well, I I have broken it down. I and I, actually, now I know who looked at it and who didn't, but I did break down a couple scenarios.
So I haven't had a chance to break ours down as to how many everybody would attend compared to the number of committees that you're on or the number of special meetings that we have to have with the township or the fire, excuse me, with the township or the fire department. Those are mandatory special meetings. That's what we need to look at. What if.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Certainly.
Possibly. What are?
What we need to look at is the budget number of fifteen thousand.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments from council members that would like to add anything? Um, we would like to continue to revisit this. What would it look like?
I I think we do need to continue to discuss this topic because I think I agree. It's it's, we should have some sort of a limit on how much total compensation we get. And I think that, um, you know, I gave my proposal, Melanie made a motion with her proposal, but I think we all need to digest it and um, have a little more discussion on it and come to a better consensus on what we feel is is fair uh and still keeps within our budget purposes. Um, I also feel just just. To Melanie about what you're saying about defining what a meeting is, I believe that that can be potentially clarified a little bit when we get to our rules procedure discussion, because. Uh, one of the things I think that should constitute a meeting is we should have some kind of minutes or, or. Uh, from every official committee meeting. Because without it, you can call anything a meeting, and that's not appropriate.
And that's what's been happening. Yeah.
Oh, that's what was happening, so.
Yes, and I, and I will say this also, because I know I was told that if I. Uh, attend a conference at Oakland County or a workshop someplace, that I'm supposed to. Put that in and count that as a meeting, I don't know if that comes out of a separate budget line item. Or whether that also is covered under compensation pay and that fifteen-thousand-dollar amount. But personally, I, I really. Would prefer to be able to just attend, I probably would have attended more conferences or workshops if I didn't have. Uh, the feeling that I had was obligated to request. Um, meeting compensation, because I have other expenses that go with it, like the registration fee and mileage or stuff like that, so. I would probably attend more workshops and things if I. Didn't feel that I was taking that out of our budget, uh, so I've been kind of passing over things, uh, to. For, for other council members to do it, but if we. Don't have to be paid, if it's just a flat rate. Then I would probably participate in more workshops and things like that, simply because I want to take the opportunity to learn more, get educated and things like that. And, but I don't want that to add to the budget line item.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with you, Larry. I, I took so many webinars during COVID because they were free, I was taking.
Yeah, webinars I don't have to put on there, because I don't have to register for them and have the village pay a fee, but if I have to say, hey, can you sign me up for this? Then I know that it's on the books and then I have to say, yeah, I attended this and it paid for it.
Well, and see, those are other blurred rules and procedures, because to me, when they're paying for me to attend a conference, they paid for me, I'm not double dipping and asking to get paid by the, you know, meeting either. I'm attending the meeting, they paid my workshop fee. I'm done.
Okay, well, I was told that was the rule, is that if you attend a workshop, that you have to put it down on your, your.
Those are items that we need to clarify, definitely, there's, there's been so many inconsistencies.
Yeah, we didn't used to do that on council, but then, uh, when I came back on, when I came back on, that's what I was told, so that's what, what I was following.
And another error is what has consisted, like you say, of a committee meeting, um, if you have not, you know, invited the whole committee and you're not taking minutes, is it a committee meeting? You know, we have to clarify these things.
Yes.
So definitely.
But it would make it easier if we just had a flat rate and said, okay, you know, it's, it's our obligation to attend. Any meetings of, of committees and workshops that, as, as part of our duties, and we get compensated. Uh, as Tony put it, sort of like a salary basis, that's my feeling is the best way, we just have to decide what's. A fair salary rate or whatever to, for compensation, I think.
Trustee Randazzo, I'd like to make a motion to, um. Revisit this, um. In February, uh, February's meeting.
To postpone it?
Yes, please.
So could you make that motion one more time?
Ah, jeez. Um, trustee Randazzo, uh, I'd like to make a motion. To table.
Postpone.
Postpone. The, um. Uh, council, council pay until the February regular meeting.
February twenty-second.
Thank you, February twenty-second.
What about the January, what about the Janu- January meeting later on this month? We should have enough time between now and then to figure it out.
Yeah, I started this in November.
I mean, it's.
All right, hold on a minute, there was a motion on the table and support, then we can have discussion. We have a motion on the table by Councilman Randazzo, supported by Councilman Hayden, do we have discussion, Pat George?
Yes, trustee George here. I, I think that's too long to, to drag it out to February, why can't we just have this thing done in, in three weeks or whatever our next meeting is? And then have, and come to a conclusion, that's plenty of time.
I agree. Trustee Naiwell, I, um, asked for this to be put on our very first meeting. And it had to be, um, held off to the second meeting. Because of a full agenda. Um, so I don't want to go another month, this is what happens when you. When you try and make changes and then months and months go by and nothing. And I, I am not going to quit with this pay, it's been years and, um. Now, I think January, I'm, I'm with Pat George, I, I thought tonight, honestly, you guys would have thought about it and did some numbers. But.
I did.
I'm with Pat.
All right.
Trustee Hayden here, um, may I ask if we have our. Two newly appointed. Council members that are, are not sworn in yet, but will be at our next meeting. Um, may I ask if we can get their opinion on this topic?
You cannot get their opinion, but you're more than welcome to give them the information so they're prepared for the January opinion. But we cannot have public input at this point.
Okay.
And they are not sworn.
Trustee Randazzo. Trustee Randazzo, um. As long as the other two, uh, appointed trustees that are, like Larry said, are not sworn in yet. As long as they're sworn in by the January twenty-fifth meeting. I'll amend my, um, my motion to January twenty-fifth. And, and Melanie, I did not know this was on there before. I, I didn't know that this was a, you know.
No, that's cool.
Yeah, trustee Hayden, I support the amended motion.
All right, so Tony, can, would you mind please, one more time, um, repeating your motion?
Yes, um, I'd like to make a motion. To postpone. Postpone, uh, the new business, um. Item H, council pay. Until the January twenty-fourth meeting. As long as the other two appointed trustees. Are sworn in.
January twenty-fifth.
Jan- twenty-fifth, I'm sorry, thank you, Dale.
And they will be sworn in ASAP, as soon as they can get there, they are in. So then they're able to start their work. Um, and just keep that in mind, future council members, you're more than welcome to sign up for DOD and go on there and look and see what's available to you, because this is online, so. Give a little plug for that. All right, so any other questions or comments for, um, the postponement to January twenty-fifth?
Only a comment to Melanie, thank you for the detailed. Report you gave us on this topic, hopefully we'll have something next, uh, at our next meeting.
Yeah, that, that'll be cool, thank you, and that would be great. Cool.
All right, Jenna, we're ready for a roll call, please? Hayden?
Yes.
Naiwell?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Bryce? Yes. That motion carries five zero, thank you. Next up is I, which is our recording secretary fee, and, um, you have received an email. That, let me get that in there, um, shows the timeline. For the recording secretary pay. And as you can see, there's been some inconsistencies, there's been some changes, um, and there's been. Uh, two different ways, there was a motion made one way and personnel committee decided another way what the rate should be. And that has, um, unfortunately been inconsistent. So what I am requesting is that we look at that and, um. That we fix that in some way, shape or form. Um, my personal request. Is, whoops, I'm lost, sorry. Is that we continue to make that fee what it should be, I would like to see it increased to sixty dollars at this point. Um, as it was supposed to be, what, in. I'm sorry, reading my note, it was supposed to be fifty dollars in two thousand and one, and we're not even at that point today. So, um, I, I'm a little frustrated, I believe Kay, you were on that decision-making. On that motion. So, um, that's something that didn't get followed through, I believe what happened at that time was the manager resigned, the new manager came on. And it just happened to get lost during that month. The second time around, um, the request was made from the recording secretary to have that rate changed. And it actually was less than it was made the first time around, and that, um, still did not go through. So, from the letter, that's the request, so, um, go ahead and do with it what you'd like.
Melanie, did you have a comment?
Sorry.
Oh, I, uh, trustee Rand, I had a comment, if, if I can ask that, or do we have to do a motion first?
I, I think. Right now, this is just a discussion topic. Is this direct, Tanya, and then we can make a motion after we talk about it?
Um, it's, it's up to you guys, if somebody chooses to make a motion, they would, they can make a motion, if you'd like to have discussion and then motion another time, that's council's pleasure.
Um, I, I. I cannot find it right now, I know I seen it earlier. My, my thing is. Is there some type of retroactive pay involved in this? To the people that were there before and are there now?
That would be council's choice, that was not my recommendation, but that's council's choice to make.
It would make more sense, I would suggest to council, that whatever policy with regard to this that you set. You set from this point forward.
And keep in mind, um, again, I'm, you know, I'm not going back to places I wa- I was not involved with, but. Um, those recording secretaries were a clerk and those clerks were well aware of the decisions made, and they did not follow through, as well as council didn't follow through, those aren't mistakes that we can go back and necessarily fix. We can only go forward.
I totally agree.
But I, you know, would like to see that fixed, in talking to the two past clerks, um, that this, both involved. You know, it's, it's frustrating, um, to not be noticed for what they did. I know Dale did bring up one very important thing. Is that the recording secretary duties are separate from the clerk duties, and so if you're paying a recording secretary, their duties for recording secretary are done outside of the office. They're not done getting paid as a. Recording secretary and double duty as a clerk and getting paid during clerk hours to do recording secretary work. And that's very important, that, you know, Dale's been really working hard to ensure that that's, um, a defined line. Um, because they are two separate duties and jobs, and you're getting paid two separate amounts.
Um, I would like to make a motion. To. Pay recording secretary pay for village council. And planning commission. Sixty dollars per meeting.
Do we have support? I can support that. All right, do we have discussions or questions on that?
Trustee Randazzo, question?
Yes.
Um. I, I did find the. Find the letter. So how many? These are two separate people, correct? I mean, literally two separate people?
Not necessarily, we, our recording secretary is usually the clerk unless we need a sub.
Okay, and the sub would get the same amount?
Correct, they would be, do the same job in, as essence.
Okay.
There are separate meetings, any council meeting or any planning commission meeting, they are getting the same rate. For those two groups.
Okay. Okay, um. And those two meetings. They would never normally cross each other, right, like same night?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Tiny just, oh, sorry.
So we're going from. Was it fifty to sixty? Is that what the?
Forty-five.
Right, it's currently forty-five, in two thousand and one, fifty dollars was approved, but never followed through.
Okay, so it's gonna, we, we're looking at forty-five to sixty.
Correct.
So it's a fifteen.
That's the most at the time.
Okay. I just want to take that into account, so. Thank you.
Okay, um, you said that these are two separate responsibilities, but I believe that. Um, under general law village act, it is the responsibility of the clerk to. Uh, take minutes of all meetings.
Correct, but they get paid separately, a separate stipend. They don't get paid their hourly rate.
Yeah, they get paid separately while they're at the meeting taking the minutes, but then. The finalizing the minutes is part of their clerk responsibilities. And preparing the draft and getting that to council and all that, is still part of clerk's responsibilities under, under Michigan general law village act.
It says they will serve as, it does not say that's part of their duties as a clerk, they will serve as it, so they get a separate stipend for doing that.
I think if it says the clerk serves as a recording secretary.
It's not that they will receive a separate pay, it's that they can receive a separate pay.
Yeah. But according to the law, the clerk is responsible for.
Responsible, that doesn't mean that they're, they have to take it. In, in a lot of communities, the clerk hires a recording secretary. To do these things.
Yep. But in our case, since we are using our clerk. As the recording secretary. Uh, we would, she would be getting paid her normal hourly. Pay as clerk to finalize any meeting minutes after the.
Well, it depends on how, how it's set up, if there's, if they're paid a stipend, that is to include both. Attending the meeting and preparing the minutes, then they don't get something extra.
So what do, what do we specify then?
Well, you don't. You don't specify either way. And I think, I think that should be clarified, if you're going to increase the pay. To sixty dollars, let's say, for, to take the minutes for the planning commission. Or for the, the village council meetings, that should include the preparation of the minutes. Outside of the office.
So if you, you look at the example, Brandon Township pays to attend the meeting and then a stipend per hour to finish the minutes. If you look at other communities, which I can pull for you, Atlas Township, Groveland Township and, um, the village of. Uh, what, what is it, right there, Goodrich, they do not get paid their hourly rate to do the minutes, they are done separately outside, they're already getting paid a fee.
Okay.
So in this essence, if it takes you two hours at twenty dollars an hour plus your fee of forty dollars, you're getting eighty, ninety dollars to do the minutes.
What has been the past practice within the village? Has the clerk in the past prepared meeting minutes during her normal working time? Or has she only worked on minutes outside of the normal working hours?
It's dependent on the manager.
I'm asking our current manager what the past practice has been since he's been manager.
It, it has varied.
Okay. Okay, 'cause. I'm looking at it that, I, I know. Our clerk's hourly rate is eighteen dollars an hour, and if our meetings last three hours, that's fifty-four dollars, so I would say, I would. Feel that it would be at least. They should get paid the same as council members for attending the meetings, which would be fifty-five dollars, so sixty dollars to me is not that much extra, and that is supposed to also include. Extra time outside of the meeting. To prepare drafts and everything else like that, and they're not getting paid anything extra for those hours, then. Um, you know, if, if the clerk is finalizing the meetings, uh, as part of her clerk's responsibility. Out, you know, once the meeting, the notes are taken at the meeting, then sixty dollars is probably. A fair fee, if they are also expected to take their own personal time outside of the work to prepare those meetings, then I'm, I'm not sure, maybe we would need to look at maybe even a little bit higher rate.
Well, and I don't want to put Jenna on the spot, um, because I know she's, you know, recent and new, but I can tell you from past clerks and past recording secretaries. It does not take that long, because you're taking minutes during the whole meeting. And so you're just finalizing and editing before you're done. Um, I know the Brandon one, it does not take more than the hour, you don't get paid more than that extra eleven fifty. So, you know. What is it taking? It depends on how well you take minutes, how efficient you are.
Trustee George here. From what I gather here, um. Jenna should, should be paid at least as much as, as a council member, fifty-five dollars for, for taking minutes at this meeting. And my understanding is, as far as what Jenna does outside, we make it sound like she's taking it home to work on. My feeling would be, and I think Jenna would concur, that she, she does the, the summary of the minutes and. Corrections and things like that during office time when she's already there, so it's not like she's doing it free, we agree? So I think, I'll just raise, raise, the, the simple solution would be to raise Jenna's amount. It, right, at least fifty-five, which he, which brings us right to a council member, I think, uh. And, and how much?
The motion was sixty.
The motion was made for sixty. And I was just stating, I feel it should be at least fifty-five, because her hourly pay for three hours is fifty-four.
I agree with you, Larry, I'm just saying fifty-five, sixty, and then what Jenna does as far as tweaking these minutes and, and fine tuning them. She, she should be doing that on, on office time, where she's getting paid anyway.
Yeah, I, I feel that can be covered, uh, uh, under her pay for.
And that's a whole nother discussion, the discussion is the pay rate, if you choose to define where and when, you know, the pay or the job is being done, that's a whole nother issue that we need to address.
If I'm Jenna, I'm not doing it at home.
When we have a sub recording secretary, they do it at home, they don't have the sec- the clerk's job, so any other secretary that's getting paid is not getting. When we have a sub recording secretary, they do it at home. They don't have the sec, the clerk's job. So any other secretary that's getting paid is not getting paid the, the clerk's hourly rate to do it. So we have.
So they're not, they're not on our payroll then?
Right. They're not on, any sub that would sub for Jenna.
Well, Jenna is.
So we had, you know, what, six or four months without a clerk that we had other people do it, you know, and they're not getting. So we just have to keep that in mind. What we decide is our procedure. We have to set that in stone.
Trustee Randazzo, um, that, that was going to be my question. It sounds like we, we really have to make. This motion would be just for our clerk, but then we also have to make one if we have a substitute. Because what it sounds like, go on.
No, I was gonna say, that's why the township does it the way they do it. They do it outside and you get paid per hour and that way everybody's exactly the same. But again, you know, I'm not comparing us to the township. That's just the way that they chose to do it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that if we, if we decided on the sixty, um, that, uh, if we do have a sub, that, that person is not a normal person. It's a sub. So they should be compensated, you know, to, within reason.
With the way that you're, the way you're discussing this issue right now, whether it's Jenna or, or another recording secretary, the fee could be the same. And, and it would not be any conflict.
Well. There would be because the substitute would not be, uh, i- if I may, i- if I may use Courtney. Courtney doesn't, you know, yeah, Courtney might be at the village office, but that's not her position. You know, she, she was getting paid to do the, to take the minutes, but then she may have been home finalizing everything. She should be compensated. So I, I think what we have to do is for the recording sec, the, the clerk, if she is doing it, you know, she's at the meeting. She, you know, and I'm just saying this, uh, example, she gets paid the sixty and then when she goes to work the next day to do the minutes or finalize and whatever, she's getting paid. On the job. Um, somebody like Courtney that has to be brought in from the outside, you need to compensate her for that. But you also gotta pay her to finish them up. So I, I just think that we should discuss just the clerk. Um, and a substitute should be a separate. Policy, if you will, or pay.
So is council in agreement that the clerk is able to use, um, village hours to complete the minutes?
Yes, I am.
Personally, yes, I believe so.
Muffin Pat?
Yes.
Tony, I would like to throw this little tidbit based on what you said. I think if we did have a sub. It would probably be because our clerk may not be available for a specific meeting, then we would have a sub that would take minutes during that meeting. They would provide their draft to the village and then the clerk.
No. If you are the one taking the minutes, you're responsible for them and you have to finish them. It's actually.
In a legal law, like if you were called in legally to a court, um, those minutes are your minutes and you have to own them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Changes can be made by us, but they are still the, the minutes of the person who wrote them.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, in that case, then I think that Tony may be correct. We may need to consider whether a, uh, separate amount would need to be considered for a substitute. But because they would have the additional responsibility of any updates and finalization that the clerk could do during her normal hours.
And I think that could be.
I'm going to.
I was gonna, I was just gonna say, but. I was just gonna say, you know, if, let's say on average, we ask Jenna, how long does it take you to, you know, finish up the minutes? If Jenna says, you know, an hour, then we base it on that because she's doing it. Um, and we're not bringing somebody in as a substitute that has never done it before. So, um. You know, if Jenna says, yeah, it usually takes about an hour. If it takes an hour and a half, then we say, okay, boom, this is it. That would be for the substitute.
Well, it's gonna be so different how long your meeting is. If you have an hour meeting or a special meeting or fire department, it's so different. We can't.
Using that as an example, Tony, then what? Isn't that an example, Tony? What we could do is we could say, okay, sixty dollars, if the clerk is performing the role of recording secretary for a substitute. That would have to be paid and would have to do all the work external from the office. Uh, if it's based on that one hour, sixty dollars is for a three hour meeting, then you'd make it eighty for the substitute, including all of the updates after. That would be what we could do.
Makes sense.
So just keep in mind, five minutes out from our three hour meeting, we have a motion on the table. Is this something we choose to go ahead with a motion or is this something that needs further discussion and we need to wait? We have one more item to get to in this next five minutes and then we need to close out our meeting. So.
I think, I think. Wait, um, so do we just not want to support it or should I just?
Are we, yeah, are we ready for a motion and a vote or would we like to wait on this?
We did a motion and it was.
I did a motion.
I feel that we can vote on this motion. We may have to consider the substitute pay.
Add it on.
Separate item later.
So Jenna, can you please read us the motion one more time?
Uh, motion by Nivell, supported by Bryce, to pay the recording secretary for village council and planning commission sixty dollars per meeting.
And I'm sorry, I feel like we're talking all around you and not including you. We love you. All right. Is there any questions or comments on the motion? Current motion?
Guys, want to get it straight. So bottom line is, this is, this is for giving Jenna sixty dollars for this meeting tonight. We agree?
The recording secretary, no, it has not gone into effect yet and been voted and she's already doing the meeting. So it would be next meeting.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I'm a party pooper. The rule follower.
All right, okay.
But you could slip her sixty bucks, Pat.
I'll slip her an extra, yeah, I'll slip her an extra twenty.
All right.
No, it's only needs to be fifteen because she's getting paid forty-five now.
We're ready for a vote, Jenna.
Five dollars more for aggravation.
I, I can't hear.
Can I vote?
Oh, yes.
Randazzo?
Yeah, yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Bryce? Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Is anybody ready to make that secondary motion or is that for next month or next meeting?
Next meeting.
Meeting.
Yeah, I think we wait until next meeting.
I think we, yeah, we're beating a dead horse here, man.
We're gonna squeeze in the Oakland County grant program because Dale has some exciting information before we close out this meeting.
And are we, are we, um, going to make a motion to extend it to finish the meeting?
We're gonna have to make that decision.
Okay.
Dale, um, do you have the grant info for us?
Yes, we, um, were able to obtain, um, a, it's called, um. City Village and Township Grant Program to support restaurants, bars and cafes. Uh, we applied for, um. Uh, the ability to get some outdoor propane heaters, um, some greenhouses to go in front of or around or within, um. Restaurants. Uh, we applied to get eight heaters, four greenhouses, two electric, electrostatic sprayers. Thirty disinfectant solution bottles and sixty propane tanks and we were granted all of it. Process of, of, uh, determining where they will be received, how they've received and how they'll be put together.
Thank you. And I'd like to give a shout out to Matt, um, because he was very instrumental in this, um, grant too. He worked heavily with Dale and Matt, is there anything you wanted to add for us? Edel? We want to say, thank you to Matt for all the hard work too. Um.
Sorry.
No, you're, no pressure. Was there anything you wanted to add to, to Dale's comments?
I was still crunching numbers on, uh, a recording secretary fee.
Are we pressuring you guys now to make your changes?
No, I think it, it is, uh, uh, the fact that we were, and, and Dale and I spent some time talking about. Uh, I, essentially, we're dealing with the, uh, the DDA district. Uh, the, certainly the, the village footprint. Uh, so it does not include, uh, restaurants, uh, out on M fifteen. Uh, it, it, it's primarily, uh, uh, restaurants within the village. And because, uh, the village has a DDA, we were given, uh, a certain premium. As far as the award goes, uh, from communities that don't have, uh, DDAs. And so as Dale and I discussed it, one of the things that, uh, I think is, is. Important to acknowledge is that both he and I were sitting there thinking, we have, really, we have one sit down restaurant that's currently functioning. The Village Pub. We have Impact North, the smoothie shop, and we have Papa Bella's that's doing carryout. And how can we apply, uh, all that is available to us to maximize the benefit? And what we came up with certainly does that. And I appreciate the village. And of course Dale being willing to go for it, if you will, because essentially that's what we did and we got everything we asked for. So it's incredible. I will say that Amy at the pub is ecstatic. Uh, been in communication with, uh, both the Impact North and Papa Bella's to see if they can benefit from some of these materials. Uh, but it, it is, it's a benefit to downtown Ortonville and thank the village for being the entity to apply for and participate in it.
We really appreciate the partnership, Matt. It worked out well for everybody.
Um, this is trustee Nivell. I just have a couple of questions. Uh, as far as where and how the items will be used, I mean, you specifically have put in here, um, that the structures are going to be placed on the Village Pub outdoor patio. Um, the structures will be outfitted with the heaters, tables and chairs. And create, you will also create staging areas with the heaters in front of each store for the comfort of patrons, employees and passerby. So are you still sticking with that, um, scenario as where you will be putting the four greenhouses and eight heaters?
Yeah, i- in fact, uh, Amy has in, originally indicated when we were talking with her prior to the application. Uh, she was taking dimensions of the products, the product specifications and trying to, uh, essentially map it out on. Uh, her patio, both the upper and lower level of the patio. That's where we primarily saw the use for the structures.
For the greenhouse?
Correct.
Okay.
Three greenhouses and one igloo.
And she, she actually indicated that, uh, she could probably use, uh, up to six. She probably had the, uh, uh. The footprint to accommodate up to six of them. Uh, but these items are village property. And so when they're not being used for this, um, current situation, the village has a responsibility to store these items. So we felt that, uh. Uh, we're, we're at capacity, if you will, with what we can manage moving forward.
Um, where are we storing these?
Real quick, Mel, I don't want to interrupt you, but one clarification, the heaters will not be in the units. The heaters will be outside the units. The tables and chairs will be in the units.
Okay. And now it's three greenhouses and one igloo?
Correct. If you look at the very last page where they awarded.
They substituted an igloo for one of the greenhouses.
But, but I know it's silly, but just to let you know, the heaters will not be inside. It's one heater per unit or whatever, the way it was described a little, but go right ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. Oh.
Trustee Randazzo, real quick, can we make a motion to continue the meeting?
Yes, as soon as we finish the discussion.
Oh, okay, okay. No problem.
So the question was, where are we storing all of these items once they're not in use?
We don't know that yet.
One, one item, uh, the, the one thing that both Dale and I thought might be a little daunting is these sixty propane tanks. Those items will be delivered as needed.
From Oakland County or from wherever, I guess.
From the propane company.
Yeah.
Contracting Hamiltons?
Larry, I, I asked about that and, um, that was not part of phase one, unfortunately.
And then I had a quick question. At the last meeting, I brought up, um, hand washing stations. Did they happen to have anything like that to be able to put out? Um, since you're gonna be doing staging areas, did they have anything like that or no?
No.
Okay. And is that something we can look into for these staging areas, especially since food is involved? It would be great.
Council wants it.
A hand wash. I brought it up last time, um, so I'm bringing it up again.
I know Matt's been looking and there has not been any grants at this time, but I have been.
It could be something we could purchase though. If. Just an idea, since we're getting these, um, areas where people will be eating and congregating.
Uh, th- th- this is to support curbside and with the exception of the pub, it is to support curbside and carryout. Not, not to create, uh, areas of congregating other than the pub.
So the pub would be responsible for their own sanitation.
Okay. But if I was to stand outside and wait for my pizza, that's twenty minutes. I don't know.
At this point, you're supposed to be in your car. You're not supposed to be outside until, you know, they're delivering to you.
All right. I'm just saying a hand washing station would be a great consideration. That's all.
Definitely.
Those are currently not listed as phase two reimbursements. Uh, we did look into, uh, hand washing sta- stations for the farmer's market during the season. However, it was, uh, much more, um. Financially viable for us to use straight sanitizer in certain stations.
That, that would make sense to me is hand, providing hand sanitizer is effective against the spread of COVID. So you don't really need to go through expensive, uh, a whole hand washing station then.
All of our businesses have access to additional sanitizer solution through the DDA.
So let's circle back to the grant. Do we have any other questions or comments for Dale or Matt?
I think it's awesome. And thank you to, um, the pub and Hill Building also. That's wonderful. But this is awesome, Matt and Dale and Courtney. It's wonderful.
Excellent.
Thank you, Matt, and, and DDA for your efforts. This is, this is really good for our community.
So what we have is ten oh eight and we are past our three hour mark. We, I would like to entertain a motion to either adjourn or to continue.
Trustee Randazzo, make a motion to continue.
Trustee Hayden, support.
All right. Motion by Councilman Randazzo, supported by Councilman Hayden to continue. Ten oh eight, um, can we please have a vote? Jenna? Randazzo?
Yes.
George?
No.
Hayden?
Yes.
My vote? Bryce? No. Motion carries three two. Next up is item thirteen, which is our unfinished business and A will be the temporary signage discussion. Go ahead and hand that over to Dale, please.
Temporary signage, uh, as you all know, that came about because of a request from a downtown merchant, uh, to have a sign that did not meet our sign ordinance, uh, down at, um. Our main street in, in the village and M fifteen. It also. It also then um was moved to uh South Street and M fifteen as an additional sign. Uh, all of these signs were were purchased by one or more downtown merchants and designed and put in place. When it was done, it was done with the idea that it would be put in place for ninety days and council would revisit to determine whether or not uh it was appropriate to move forward. I, what I have heard from from local merchants is that it has continued to be helpful to their business. I think that it is a a decent addition to the sign ordinance from the standpoint of a temporary sign that may need the the uh fluctuation of being able to be a different design or a different style from time to time as the need um comes about. And it's my recommendation that we continue uh the approval of the use of those two signs indefinitely.
Um, trustee Randazzo, um, I um, I did contact um a couple of the um shop owners. Uh, I did get one response um, which stay, alls I was looking for was did they see an increase or a decrease in in uh customers. Um, the one response I did get, um, they said they had seen a a positive growth. Um, my only situation, um, the signage at um M fifteen and um Mill Street. Um, I'd like, uh, I guess, um, manager, um Stewart, if he can check on the requirements that he he spoke to me about, and I actually forgot about them being close to the sidewalk. Um, when that sign was put in, I believe that sign was uh about thirteen feet away from the sidewalk. Um, but then it was moved um by a different en- entity um, which caused a concern due to the fact that we did have to call Mistig out there before we put that post up. I personally don't have a problem, but I would like to see a a a time. I don't want to have an indefinite time. That's that's not part of my procedures. Um, so um, I'll just put that out there.
Yeah, this is trustee Hayden. I have some concerns also because the original motion by council was to replace the sign that was removed. And instead of only replacing the one sign that was removed, we ended up having a second sign added down at South Street by the A and W. And I think that I would still like to have a a further discussion on this. However, due to the time, I would like to make a motion to postpone this topic until our January twenty fifth meeting and continue the discussion then, so that we can get to some other topics that I think are of more urgency tonight.
Support. Um, trustee Nivell, support.
All right, we have a motion table by councilman Hayden, supported by councilman Nivell, to postpone until the January twenty fifth meeting. Do we have any questions, comments, or discussion?
Do we, I I would like just for the record, um, that we should at least temporary temporarily for the, and and in the record, I should say, that we're allowing it to stay up until, we'll say the twenty sixth.
Well, by postponing the review, my assumption is that we leave things as is until we complete our review at the next meeting.
Right, we are currently under review, right?
Okay, fair enough.
Is there anything we can do to better prepare or any research that needs to be done or any questions we have for the manager before that time? I know that you said you wanted further discussion. Is there anything specific that we'd like more clarification on? So we're ready?
Um, like I said, Dale, if you can go there and um make sure that the the measurement from the sidewalk, if I understood you right before, the measurement from the sidewalk to the base of the sign is within the applicable uh ordinances. Um, and um also it, the one at Mill Street, at least, um, Mill and fifteen, um, that one does look a little bit Yankee. You know, it's not really sitting, it's moving around. Um, so it just needs to be stabilized, you know, by the, by the shop owners.
Yeah, and and for my side, I would like to know who actually um, put the signs in place at both locations and also who with the village they coordinated with before those signs were placed and whether there was any um check or review of the positioning where the signs were to go before those signs were erected. Just get some clarification on those topics.
Yeah, trustee Nivell, um, Tony and Wayne did the one at Mill and um M fifteen. And then I ended up putting up the one at South and A and W. I coordinated every step with Dale. Um, Dale knew everything that was happening, gave approval. We had Miss Dig come out on that one. I'm assuming Tony had Miss Dig on the other one.
Okay, well, this just needs to be provided. This information just needs provided by the.
And there you have it. That's all there is to say. Um, so just FYI, the wayfinding committee um is in agreement with keeping up those temporary signs. And I can explain more next meeting, but I just wanted to let you know that the wayfinding committee was in agreement with keeping those um temporary directional signs.
And uh trustee Randazzo, Larry, just um, just, and I just want to reiterate it. The original location um of the fifteen M fifteen and Mill Street sign is not the same location that it currently is. It was set back from the sidewalk with, again, the assumption that it was that, I I believe, I want to say it was like thirteen feet, but um, I did.
Because I believe the original one was was probably in the road right of way, and I know that you.
Though, no, the original, yeah, the original one was between the Ortonville sign that's there and the uh telephone post. It was moved, but not by myself nor Wayne.
Okay, because I thought originally they had the signs just stuck on the telephone post.
Well, yeah, yeah, that was originally, it was stuck on the telephone pole, the one that's basically on on Mill Street.
Yeah.
So.
And then we said they could be re-erect, but let's, let's.
Can we talk about that?
Discuss this next time.
You have more than welcome to ask, ask Dale any questions that you have and clarify any more information. I know Larry did have a couple of questions. Please reach out to him. But we would like to postpone it and have a full discussion later. But like I said, whatever you need available, ready, um, question wise, please be.
Yeah, so we need, we need to do a quick roll call vote on my motion.
Correct, so any other questions or discussion on the motion? All right, Jenna, please. George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Rice? Yes, thank you. Motion carries five zero. Next up is the rules of procedure, and I'm going to hand that over to Dale to walk through with us.
I strongly recommend to you that you put this off until the the next meeting as well. This is a very convoluted and involved document with a lot of recommendations from a lot of different council members. You're going to be another hour if you give this any justice at all. And I think you ought to hear from your new cons- council members as well with regard to it.
I fully agree with that and having said that, I make a motion to postpone the rules of procedure until our January twenty fifth meeting.
Trustee Randazzo, second.
Motion by councilman Hayden, supported by councilman Randazzo to postpone to the January twenty fifth meeting. Any questions or comments on the motion? Jenna, please. Hayden?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Rice? Yes. Motion carries five zero. Next up, we have the review and possible amendment of the preservation park um ordinance.
I'm recommending to the council that you also postpone that because that is on the agenda for the planning commission tomorrow night for further discussion. And if they're going to have uh further input to the council, I think you should hear it before you act.
Trustee Randazzo, I'd like to make a motion. A motion to uh postpone the review and possible amendment of preservation park ordinance until the January twenty fifth um, twenty twenty one meeting.
Have support? I'll support that. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Uh, yes, I have a comment. I I would not like to postpone this mainly because I feel that the planning commission is going to look for some direction from us as to where to go with this. And so even if we don't fully address this topic tonight, I think that we should at least discuss it to the point of providing some um direction to planning commission on what next steps we would like to have them do. Because otherwise, they're going to be meeting tomorrow and without any action or discussion on this topic tonight, they will just essentially be in limbo for another month before they can look at this. And I think that we at least need to discuss it to the point where we can give them direction on where we see the next steps.
Trustee Randazzo, um, Larry, I would fully back you on that, except this was slated with a motion to visit it on January twenty fifth in the January meeting. Because I I made the the request for February um of um um, Mr. McAvinci, but a motion was put in for January twenty fifth. Um, and this again, being technically the December meeting, uh, they wouldn't even have they'd be in the same boat, no matter.
Actually, actually, Tony, uh, I was the one who made that motion of the planning commission. And it was not that we were saying they should not decide until January, but that uh we would recommend that they um rescind it effective January so that it would be effective past the end of hunting season. So it, so it was a topic that was slated for the December meeting and we could take it, we could take action on it because the action, the motion could stay to be effective as of date. And that was all we were intending from the planning commission recommendation is to make it effective starting January.
Okay, I mean, I I missed.
Consideration.
Yeah.
And and the other part of this is, yeah.
Uh huh. Uh, the way I read it is you were looking for an answer for um the, you know, from from Rick in January. Um, because I I've been looking around and he's never been on tonight. And then I realized this is technically the December meeting, so I'm.
Yes, but it, the second part of the motion, I think this is the only part I would at least like to see addressed tonight, is um follow up and a second step to do a proper evaluation of the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Property to identify modifications. So I think that's the only thing I really wanted to have discussion on is the second part of that motion about do we agree with um enabling the planning or directing the planning commission to do a follow up uh according to the second step of evaluating that park property and identifying modifications to the general park ordinances. That's the only thing I think that we're looking to have um some kind of direction to the planning commission for tomorrow's meeting.
Okay, um, did you make a motion?
You made a motion to postpone and Tanya supported it. So that we have not voted on that motion. This was the discussion about whether to postpone or not.
I got you. I got you.
So this is my question. We've had this discussion before. Um, Rick McAvinci, who is very well versed on park properties and, you know, wildlands and every part of, you know, DNR and state lands, county lands, um, has requested numerous times there to be a forest management plan done on this property. Are we able to be making the decisions that we're making without even having the forest management management plan done on this and near in part before we make any decisions of what this property is or is not, or should or shouldn't be? Are we able to decide specific ordinances on a property that we don't even know what the property can and cannot be?
Trustee Nivell, um, the first thing is, do we have money for that? That costs money.
It does. It's it's about four hundred dollars.
And it's very, um, we have to make very clear that Rick could not be part of that um management process too. For for those of you that are new, because that's a conflict of interest.
Correct.
And I think that's part of the problem is um.
That's done by.
We're putting the cart before the horse, you know, and.
By making decisions on the property, we are. That's why I'm asking. We don't even know what that property is. So if we are, the forest management plan has been a recommendation for almost fifteen years on these properties. It's about four hundred dollars. It will include this and Naren Park. Both of them have forest. What do you call it? Traits? That's the wrong word. Rick would beat me, but.
What's four hundred dollars?
Pardon?
What is four hundred dollars?
To do the forest management plan, the DNR to come out and do that.
Oh, do you have information on that?
Yeah, we have, yes, and not right now because again, I'm I'm throwing that out there. That was on the January agenda, yes.
But I I need it for tomorrow's planning commission.
Well, that's why I wanted to at least hold off on postponing this so we can at least discuss this aspect of it. And the rest can be deferred till the next meeting.
So I was going to have Rick address that at the January meeting and come to us and discuss that with us. That's what I'm saying. Do we want to make changes to an ordinance when we don't have answers on the property? That's all my question is. I'm not saying to make that decision right now. I'm saying, should we make one before the other, then at the same time? I don't know. That's all I'm asking.
Yes. No, I I totally, and I agree with you. So I just want to make sure, um, though, that we stay on task with the planning commission because it appears that people are taking and doing their own agenda. And it, and I can see it getting messy.
That's my concern too. I want to make sure that we give some clear direction to the planning commission, what they should be discussing uh and what they should be planning to do at tomorrow's meeting. And right now, we don't have clear direction from council to the planning commission. So that was the reason I wanted to at least discuss what direction to give planning commission for tomorrow.
So I guess the question would be, do you want planning commission to take the lead? Or does village coun- council want to take the lead and go from there?
Except I think we're.
Please stop a minute, please, Larry, Larry. Let me just get it out.
Okay.
Um, because that question right there will determine how our meeting goes tomorrow night. So it's something you want.
Take the.
Planning commission to take the lead and say, okay, we need to do a workshop. We we can put our thoughts on paper as to what we think next steps could be, or is that something you would like council to do first and give to planning commission?
Except our discussion right now is supposed to be, should we postpone or not this agenda item? So that's what.
Request of planning commission was to review the specific ordinance.
Right. And identify modifications of the general park ordinance to address concerns specific to the property. And that's where it got messy.
So went to to planning commission.
And we rescind it.
Okay.
Um, we made a motion.
We did not rescind. We made a recommendation to rescind the added ordinance and then as a second step.
We'll recommend to council a first step to rescind, correct.
Okay, so.
So I think we can postpone the rescinding of the ordinance for for next time. But I would like to at least still discuss the second step, whether we should have planning commission start with the second step so they can get started working on the review of the property and determining what would be appropriate for an ordinance for that.
And I I agree with Tanya. I don't um think we can make a uh, an ordinance.
No.
Something that we um.
And that's why I feel it's important that we give some direction to planning commission to start doing some research and put together some information to help.
Or not, or not. That was my question. Does village council want to take the lead? Or do they want to have planning commission?
And to do that, we have to.
Come up with next steps.
And to do that, we have to discuss that tonight rather than postpone the entire time.
That is right there. That's a discussion right there. That that's it.
Well, right now, our motion was to postpone. So any discussion we've had, we can't give as any direction to anybody. Any discussion we have is just whether we postpone or not.
We can also withdraw the motion and create a different motion as well, so.
Trustee Randazzo, I will withdraw the motion.
And and I will support it. It's your motion.
So with all that said, now, um, Melanie, what direction would you like to have the council give to planning commission?
Um, no, it's a discussion. I I do. Um, no, it's a discussion. I do, we as a council want to take the lead and then give next steps to Planning Commission to do the research and whatnot? Or do we want Planning Commission to come up with an agenda and take the lead and give it to council? How would you guys like to see this go?
Okay, we sent an ordinance to Planning Commission. I'm hearing agenda and lead. That's not an ordinance. We're talking about an ordinance only.
All right.
So I just want to make sure, when you keep saying lead in what, I need to know what part, because it's.
Okay, it was the second part of the ordinance that Larry wanted to talk.
The second part of the motion.
I thought we withdrew that motion.
So do we want to give Planning Commission the ordinance to review, which we already gave it to them in November?
Oh, no, it's the second part of it.
Well, what we, what we had asked Planning Commission to do was review the specific addition to the park ordinance, which was the section 92.05D on the preservation park.
Correct.
And they gave an initial recommendation back on what to do with that specific piece. But they also provided as a second recommendation that there should, a follow up should be done to more thoroughly review the ordinance and the property, the park properties, to see what would be appropriate for future changes to the ordinance. I would like to give direction to Planning Commission to start that process of reviewing the park properties and the rest of the park ordinance to see what would be appropriate changes down the road that they can then provide back to council. So we could do a additional modification or update of the park ordinance as needed. And that for the specific 92.05D, that we can hold off until our January 25th meeting to make a decision on that one specific piece of the ordinance. That's what I would recommend that we should give direction at this time.
And then allow Planning to go forward with the second part.
Yes, so they can start looking over the rest of the ordinance and the park properties and see what things may be appropriate to change or modify, or may no longer be necessary in there, or whatever.
Is there any objections to it or concerns with that from council?
Um, no, just repeat it, but very concisely. Don't pontificate, please. So you want Planning Commission to look at the ordinance again?
We want Planning Commission to start their proposed second step to do a proper evaluation.
Okay, second step. That's the second step. What do you want us to do with the ordinance?
We're waiting till.
You've already done your recommendation for the first part of the ordinance, the specific ordinance. We don't need anything more from Planning Commission on that piece of it.
Perfect.
So we are going to start looking at the.
Got it.
Rest of the ordinance as is, and evaluating the property and what is or is not appropriate.
Yeah, no, I got it. Okay, I was just confused about.
Yeah, we don't have to look anymore at 92.05.
No, I know. I got it. I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Trustee George, I think we got the cart before the horse. I said this from day one. I want to see a trail. I want to see it. The ordinance, who cares about the ordinance right now? What I want to see, the people of this town want to see a trail. So what I think we should be focusing on is what is the best trail that we can put in that park right now? The trail, the ordinance will follow. So for us to be talking, spending, to be wasting time on an ordinance, right now with the existing ordinance, the only thing I would do is change point five to point, point one. Point five basically says that the park is dangerous. I'd put that on point one under its present state, put it on point one, put it in bold, and just leave that sign alone. What we need, and Bob MacArthur talked about it last, probably over a year ago, we need a committee to basically give us a trail. And we can worry about forest management and things like that later. People of this town want to be able to do what the people on Atlas Township, they want to be able to drive a car up or a bicycle, park it and go for a walk. And they can't do that right now. Nobody has a clue where that trail even is. And we need to do that.
Atlas Township did not begin without a forest management plan. We will receive zero funding without a forest management plan. And we cannot ruin the wildlife that we have in there. We do have a protected species in there. We cannot put a trail through there.
Kick the can, Tanya.
Not a forest manager.
Kick the can.
Okay, in the vested interests of our residents, we cannot abuse nature without knowing an educated way to do that.
Yeah, we want to abuse in an educated fashion, right?
Nope, we need to educate so we do not abuse it. We have a protected species in there, and nobody knows where it is, except select few, until it's documented. The DNR has made that very clear with us.
Well, I think to answer.
Do we get that DNR information? Because none of us on planning have that all day.
It is with the information for the master plan, and Planning Commission has that as well. I will have to find that. I have that buried.
The only information is that they have an area that's designated as a class two wetland.
And with the protected species in it, there's two. And then Rick McAvinci, Jonathan Schecter, Los Robbins, there's a lot of people that have that as well. But again, we do not have any documentation. We cannot receive any funds whatsoever without that assistance. That's the very first step, and it's going to take some time.
But to address what Pat was saying about trail, as long as 92.05D stands, we can't do trail. So I think the council still needs to address that, which I think we should do at our January 25th meeting. But I think we can give the Planning Commission the direction to move forward with evaluating the property on how to do what Pat says the community wants, which is trails and any other type of development in a safe manner that is, that will preserve the special characteristics of our park properties.
And this is trustee Nivell. More specific, I believe if we're going to do a trail, we need to get the people from Granger to downtown in a safe manner, and from the schools to downtown in a safe manner. Just doing the trails where there are some, and be respectful of homeowners. And I ran on that, and I'm telling you, I'm going to be respectful of everyone from the Red Barn to all the homeowners. But again, I want it on record, the focus should be a trail from Granger to downtown and from the schools to downtown. And that's it.
And I think we need to get the community involved to find out what the phases of a trail would look like once we know where trails are possible, and then give them the options to decide, hey, where would they like to see some trails go in? But we don't have, you know, any options for them at all yet.
And I can add that.
Part of what Planning Commission, you know, can put as, you know, one, two, three, four. Yeah, definitely. That's a part.
And I can add that when this 92.05D was proposed to be added, I fought against it because I felt that saying no trails was irresponsible, because I felt that if we really want to protect any sensitive wildlife in these properties, it's very important that we have marked trails, that we mark trails and say, this is where people can go. Don't go off the trails because you could stray into some sensitive areas. So I think it's really important that we have marked trails. And part of the rules would be that people need to stay on the marked trails if we want to protect.
Right. And Planning Commission can, you know, talk about that tomorrow. I totally agree with that.
So is everybody in agreeance that we are sending that back to Planning Commission? And we are looking to entertain a motion on that for the secondary verifications?
Okay, so we need a motion to direct them to do that?
Okay.
I want to make a motion that we accept the second step of the Planning Commission's recommendation, and ask the Planning Commission to start doing the evaluation of the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park property and other park properties to identify modifications to the general park ordinance to address any concerns with those properties.
Support.
Motion on the table by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Nivell. And can we please have you read that real quick, Jenna, if you don't mind, and we will have a vote?
Motion by Hayden, support by Nivell, to accept the second step of Planning Commission's recommendation and ask Planning Commission to start evaluation of the Ortonville Preservation Park property to identify general modifications to the ordinance to address any concern.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, I think we're ready. Please, Jenna? Nivell?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
George?
No.
Hayden?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Motion carries for one. And did we have a postponement of the first step? Did we know the postponement in general from Tony? Are we looking for a postponement of the first step, or are we just going to put it on old business? I'm sorry.
If we can save the motion and just keep it on old business for next time, great. If not, I can make a motion.
Doesn't matter. I would prefer that it's on there that it's been postponed, so we know.
Okay, then I make a motion that we postpone a decision on the first part of the recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding the ordinance 92.05D preservation park.
Support.
Motion on the table by Councilman Hayden, supported by Councilman Nivell. Do we have any questions, comments, discussion on postponing the first section of the 92.05D? All right, I think we're ready. Please. Randazzo?
Yes.
George?
No.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Motion carries for one. Thank you. All right, we've made it.
Trustee Randazzo, real quick, I just want to make sure though, this, whatever happens with the ordinance at the date of 2020 gets changed, you know, where it would be signed.
You mean the update to it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just because it says 2020 still.
That's because it was our December meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, item 14 is the village managers report. Dale, what do you have for us?
I have nothing for you this evening.
All right. Anything that anybody has question wise on the nothing? I want to leave it open.
But can I ask, did we get the crack seal reimbursement yet, Dale?
I'm trying to think. I don't think so. We've applied.
Did you submit? No, did you submit all the expenses?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know roughly when that was worth submitted?
No.
Okay, and, well, I'll let Pat ask the other one about the concession stand. Pat, where is he? Wait. Okay, where are we with the Sherman Park concession stand?
We've gotten to them the corrected legal description, and I think that's the last step we needed to get the grant finalized. But we have not received that yet from the state.
The, the grants we have not received, or?
Not the finalization, not the signed copy.
The signed copy.
Because we needed to change the legal description, and we got that done.
Perfect. So that was submitted, and then we're just waiting to hear from the.
That the state has officially allowed us to go forward with expenses.
Cool, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Dale, did you have an opportunity to follow up regarding those vehicles that were for sale at 27 Mill Street?
No.
I don't want to cut anybody off. Just remember, there's items from, other ones from trustees. This is just something on his report that he doesn't really have. But if there was something on the last report that you wanted to follow through it, that's fine.
I had, I had sent on a request, and I had copied all council members on it, to ask Dale to follow up on that topic and include it in the management report. That's why I'm asking about it at this point in time.
I didn't realize she asked to include managers' report. My apology.
Okay, will you have a chance to follow up before the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, we're ready for public comments. These are non-agenda items only. Anybody from the public, you have up to three minutes to speak with us. Please type your message in the chat if you choose not to speak. If you'd like to pop on at any time on the screen, please do that for us, and let us know what you have for us. Public comments, questions, anything for us. Kay, you got something?
I do, and I don't know how to get into the chat, so I'll figure that out before we meet again.
Oh, no, you're good. Go with, write whatever you're doing. If people don't want to speak, they can go in the chat. But if you want to speak, we'd love to hear from you.
Okay, yes, I just wanted to say, I just really loved the job. And I know it took a lot of different people, but somebody approved the new lighting, Christmas lighting downtown, and all the different activities and things that went on. I just thought that was so cool, especially this year when everybody's just, you know, stuck to their houses. And it just, I just really loved it. And I just wanted to give accolades to anybody and everybody that participated in that.
Absolutely.
That's all.
So far, wait till next meeting. Anybody else? Any public comments or questions or anything for us? You're more than welcome to use the chat. You're more than welcome to speak up. We'd love to hear you because you stayed with us so long.
Don't be afraid, Kay. We have not gone this long, and I wish Keith was up. We've been down by 9:30. Please don't be afraid.
We had a lot of topics. We need to get better at getting through them.
Yeah.
All right, items from trustees. We're going to start alphabetically with Pat and work forward.
I'm all set.
All right, anybody else? We're on to Larry.
I just want to give a shout out to DPW. I think that after we had that snow, and they were out there on a weekend, and they did a great job getting everything cleared, even the sidewalks and everything. And that was just great job, and thank you for that.
They are.
Melanie, what about you?
Okay, real quick, I would like to have on the next meeting, clacks slash donated trees on the next meeting, please. And it goes with the garden, Heritage Garden, and also grant discussions added. And other than that, that's it.
All right, appreciate it. How about Tony?
Um, yeah, I just got a couple things. Basically, Dale, if you would please, per the discussion in the beginning of the meeting about the IT meeting, if we can set something up that the three of you folks at your convenience, looking like, I'm good for the 13th, if that's a good day for you guys. But any day that you choose, just shoot me an email, let me know. I like to do something before the 25th. Also, during this past week, I just want to bring this to the attention. You all know that I work for Fred part time at the Parks and Rec for the sledding hill. The sledding hill itself is open. That's never been technically closed. But we had to wait for authorization to run that conveyor belt. The concerns are based off COVID. And last year, when we ran it, I left for vacation in March, and that's when all this COVID thing started. So, you know, we did run it earlier in 2019 from January and February. But COVID restrictions really didn't go into effect until March 13th, when I was in Florida. So we did get authorization. And now it's just up to having snow on the ground. I cannot just arbitrarily go out there and fire it up. I get my direction from Fred, Mr. Wybrandt, and he did contact me today. And he told me that Saturday, again, with having snow out there, he liked me out there to start it up. So nine to five on Saturday, and going forward, I'll try to start posting back on the Facebook, you know, videos and things like that that I enjoy doing. So that's about all I got.
Um, Tony, would you mind telling the public what might be the changes because of COVID? How will that look when using the conveyor belt?
Um, yeah, as far, okay, as far as the conveyor belt, there has to be a six foot Um, yeah, as far, okay, uh, as far as the conveyor belt, um, there has to be a six-foot distance between. A person in front, person behind, um, Fred and I discussed making some type of markings. On the conveyor belt, um, he is, he's, we're going to talk more about that on Wednesday, and again. Only because I work for Fred, um, that's something that he and I, um, were discussing. Um, his suggestion was if I had somebody else out there that could work the bottom of it while I worked the top. Um, that was one idea, but, um. You know. That's pretty much everything that's going on, you just got to keep that six-foot distance, um, unless you, you know. Um, unless there's a small child involved. Assuming that that child lives with the guardian that is with them, going up the sledding hill, they can be together, but other than that. Um, people have to keep that six-foot distance, and, um. You know, also, there'll be a six-foot distance up on the hill, uh, prior to the, the folks, you know, taking off. From the top.
Will there be any concessions given to those with health needs that need to use it, seeing that the wait will be longer, what about, you know, I mean. That's going to create an issue for those that do need the conveyor belt versus those that it's a luxury.
I'm, I'm sorry, I miss, I'm not following you.
The lines will be longer and the wait will be longer, so those with risks that, that have, um, needs to use the belt because of a.
Oh, yes.
So what about, you know, the lines are going to be long, and like I said, those that don't necessarily need it, and it's a luxury, will there be a preference for those that need it? For health reasons?
Yes, yes, and, and, um, you know, I'll talk to Fred about that, but. Usually when I'm out there, it's, I'm the one that's operating it, so, you know, if I do see, um. An adult or a child that is in necessity of using it. Um, then yes, by all means, I will have them, uh, you know, quote unquote, cut the line. Um, so, yeah, that, that's always a, that I always make sure takes precedence, uh, because really, that's. That's the majority of what that, that conveyor belt, um, is for, um. And there is room for them to climb, uh, up the hill if need be, um, so, yeah.
And I just know, yeah, residents with house risk, I know that's a concern, I wanted to share with everybody, you guys are well on top of it, and I love it, thanks.
Yeah, and they do, they will have to still wear, even if they got a thing wrapped around their face, a scarf, they still have to wear a mask. So, um, you know, I'm going to have mine on, because. All those little kids running around, and some adults, I see a lot of them out there, um, you know, but masks do have to be worn, um. Just like anywhere else.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it, I thank you for clarifying for everybody, there's been a lot of people waiting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright, well, I just, um, echo everybody's sentiments, we appreciate DPW, we appreciate how beautiful Christmas does look downtown, and we look forward to a wonderful. Twenty twenty-one, and I look forward to working with everybody more, including our two new members. Um, item number seventeen is our adjournment, I don't know if anybody's interested in making a motion.
Trustee Randazzo, uh, making a motion for adjournment.
I don't know, you want to postpone that?
Nah.
Wait, you need support first. I recommend postpone, oh no. We have a motion on the table by Councilman Randazzo, supported by Councilman Nivell, can we please have a roll call, Jenna? George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yep.
Bryce? Yes, motion carries five zero, and we are adjourning at ten fifty-three PM, good evening, stay safe.
You too, bye-bye.